Thank you for joining us, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is 10:00 AM Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. Call the meeting to order and first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America. I do very proudly forward to his terms. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice. Charles.
Next item on the agenda is citizen input, and we do have two requests to speak here today. So Brett Mattis and then following that will be Rambozell. Thank you.
Hello again, Commissioners. This is Brett Matthias from Preserve East Bend. Thank you for taking this time to listen to me. By now, I hope you've all had a chance to read the eight-page letter that I sent in earlier. I sent them all to you and to SWAC. But some of the areas I discussed at in East Bend, we're talking about wildlife habitat, the deer and elk wintering range, loss of property value, and such. But the real reason I'm here to speak to everyone is to emphasize what we at Preserve East Bend are trying to preserve. A little history, my wife's family lived on Byram Road since the 70s, and we were fortunate enough to have found our property about 22 years ago. My wife's mom found it, she's deceased now. We live at the very end of Bear Creek Road. Behind us is BLM land that is now considered juniper woodlands. There's a map and it is a designated area by the BLM for people to ride horses, hike, enjoy the wildlife, no shooting, no motorized vehicles. That's all behind us. It goes from Bennett Road all the way to Dodds and it's basically right adjacent to the COID land. We're surrounded by high desert, thousand-year-old junipers, rugged rock outcroppings, scores of different wildlife from eagles, elk, bobcat, you name it. I'm sure that the High Desert Museum would be happy to have this in their backyard. That's what we live adjacent to. It's interesting to me, and I must submit to you, I look at cities, I build commercial buildings for a living, and I see where they protect historical districts, historical buildings, and it's a big deal. It's important. It's about the history of the area. And then, here's my question. How do we get buy-in from the Commissioners and the county that something that is so essential as the historical part of central Oregon where we live, how do we protect it? How do we get you, everyone on board to realize the value of this, to protect it? For example, I just want to throw out one thing here is, how many people are fortunate enough to come off of Highway 20, make a turn on Bear Creek Road, a left turn, and looking straight ahead in a pine tree, we have a bald eagle's nest. And I saw her two days ago, just this white head sticking out. It was just beautiful, and she's been there for a while. That's what we have, that's what we're protecting. My goal is to share our passion about this area with you and just to understand why it's imperative that we preserve East Bend. I also want to point out one last thing, and that is that we are legitimate, hard-working taxpayers in Deschutes County and have been, and that's why we have such a great facility here. That's why there's such a great staff here. We all contribute to the good of the county. We have now just spent over $15,000, close to $15,000 plus untold for legal fees, as well as untold hours trying to protect this eastern bend area. And we've had meetings, we've developed a coalition, we've got all sorts of momentum. But my ask to you is this, is we just want to share our passion with you, we want to bring you on board. If there's something that we can do to, you know, shed some light on any subject, please look to us for that. And because this area, this land deserves the respect, the attention of the county, and it deserves to be protected and have zero harm done to it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you, Brett.
Can I just ask, yeah, and a quick nod, sorry, something of interest to you, but I'll be, the question is to staff. I'm curious whether the sites that are, that Mr. Matthias is discussing are some of the sites that will be excluded under the FAA recommendation if we proceed with that today?
Chadson Toll, Director of Solid Waste. Yeah, he's speaking of the COID site at the end of Bear Creek Road, and that is part of this matter we have before you this morning on the five-mile exclusion under the FAA regulations.
Thank you, Chad. So Mr. Matthias, you may very well hear today that those sites are being set aside. You know, that's one of the things we'll be deliberating on. So just to speak to your immediate concern, if you had actually made the linkage between those things in your public comment, then your public comment wouldn't have been allowed because, yeah. Good, thank you.
Well, yeah, so, you know, we're taking public comment. The concept is that we don't have a big effort from the community on any specific agenda items unless it's a public hearing. So we're kind of caught between a push and a pull here right now. I'm the chair of this, and I want to thank you for your testimony, but yeah, my fellow Commissioner keeps reminding me that I mentioned items that are not on the agenda for public comment, and then they end up being mentioned. So it's going to have to be a gray area, I mean, unless we end up in a really bad situation. But we're, I, as the chair, trying to not be in a situation where 20 passionate people take their three minutes to tell us about something that's not a public hearing. So I'm just saying, this is the process of government right now. Next is Mr. Rambozell.
Morning Commissioners. Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
I have another preservation issue, opportunity that's not on the agenda. I want to ask specifically, is there some money maybe we can find for creating a bounty on these little green propane bottles? I brought it up before. I really have become more and more aware of this, so I'm going to be more and more passionate about it and come to you again about it. But lottery funds, marijuana taxes, there's got to be some way we can get this, because we know it's going to work if we offer a dollar bounty, and those little green bottles will come in from our deserts and our forests that are already littering daily. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being persistent on the matter. Are there any other requests to speak on items not on the agenda? I'm just trained to say that here today or online. We do have a request online.
Mrs. Dearing, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
I wanted to speak on the House, keeping it items on the agenda. Is that, do I need to wait on that?
Yes.
That's an item that's on the.
Yeah, it's on our agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so there'll be a public hearing on the matter soon. Okay, I got you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At 11:10 if we're on time.
Okay, so other emails received, citizen input, Sisters resident concerned about short-term rentals and adverse effects on the neighborhoods. So I want to thank her for that information. Citizen input for same topic, short-term rentals. It's an activity that's growing right now is what's been pointed out. And then also support of the transient room tax towards workforce housing, which is on the agenda today also. So at this time, seeing no other citizen input on other items, consent agenda.
So move approving the consent agenda.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Item number eight, consideration of a recommendation from Solid Waste Advisory Committee relative to the implementation of the FAA circular regarding five-mile exclusion zone.
Morning Commissioners. Chadson Toll, Director of Solid Waste.
Just, it's on.
It's on, okay. Dwight Miller, Parametrics, working for Solid Waste.
Great, thank you.
So we have two parts to this agenda item. The first item is the FAA advisory that we discussed with the Board on January 25th. We reconvened the Solid Waste Advisory Committee last week to basically have the same discussion we had with the Board here on the recommendation of the FAA advisory that restricts citing landfills within five miles of, to the airports in Deschutes County. We also presented the conversations we had with both the management of the Bend and Redmond airports to the advisory committee. Motion was brought up and carried unanimously to accept that advisory, the five-mile restriction as a requirement for restricting, citing any of the landfill sites we're looking at as part of that. So, get the wording correct here, we recommend that the Board of County Commissioners direct staff to, I'm sorry, wrong staff report. Motion is presented and unanimously passed by the SWAC members present recommending that the Board of County Commissioners consider the recommendation in FAA Advisory Circular 150, 5233C, that landfills not be cited within five miles of public use airports and be considered a requirement for purposes of screening and selecting candidate sites for the county's solid waste management facility.
So you said there's two parts today, so what?
Yeah, the second part is we're going to give you an update on where we are with the process.
Okay, yep, yep. So at this point, yeah, as I say, we discussed this, we sent it back to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Now, this is another final step, which is a little bit awkward, but let's figure out how we're going to do this. Any thoughts, Commissioners?
I did listen to part of your meeting the other day and did hear that your vote was unanimous from your group.
It was, yes.
Yes, so.
I appreciate hearing from many, many constituents about how many birds landfills actually do attract and what kind of a concern that is for an airport. So I'm very comfortable with this Solid Waste Advisory Committee recommendation.
And the current landfill site is within this same five-mile?
It's actually, the upper one-third of not landfill is within that five-mile radius, but the advisory is specific to new facilities, not existing.
Yeah, but I'm just acknowledging, I mean, we've had activity at the perimeter of a five-mile radius.
We have.
Historically.
Yes.
Just acknowledging that.
And I did recognize you said we've received 661 submittals of comments.
Correct.
And I think we've probably received 661 too, so.
And I've read, Tim Burnell and I have read every single one of them and responded to every single one of them.
So, and then in a response to, you know, Preserve East Bend and this whole thing, and I've said this every time, and I want people to pay attention, we're looking to cite one landfill in Deschutes County. It's going to be cost-effective, it's going to be cost-effective for generations if we can do this. The alternative is to put many, many truckloads on the highways and send them a couple hours away. So finding one site in Deschutes County is the goal. I hope everybody's in on that. It is so easy to say, wait a minute, my backyard? Let me stay up all night and list all the reasons why this shouldn't happen. I understand, we're all in that spot, but as residents of Deschutes County, you know, community members, wanting to have an orderly, safe, healthy environment where we have a cost-effective disposal location, let's take a half a step back and look, okay, where is reasonable? Because it's not just going to be anybody's specific backyard, it's going to be not over there, not over there, and here's 10 reasons why. So let's all think about that, please, as a community. With that, I support these two being taken off at this time also, but as I say, there's other sites, and then we're going to get into a little bit of that today. So is there a motion?
Yes, I move to recommend, recommendation from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to recognize the FAA recommended five-mile radius around Redmond and Bend airports as a requirement for purposes of screening and selecting our candidate sites for the county's solid waste management facility.
Second. Any other discussion? Just like I was saying, now we're double acknowledging it. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, citizen members looking at this, they're going to focus on it for the next couple of years, they've made this recommendation, the Board of Commissioners acknowledging it, and as I say, let's do this together. So with that, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay, step two today.
So we have an update to the process. A lot of what we've been talking about the last month have been part of the updates to the process, and so what we wanted to do is a little bit broader update for the Commissioners along those lines. How do I?
Well, and for the community that are, and people are paying attention.
Yes.
I know, when we explained that we actually did take a scientific poll in 2019, people were like, well, where did that happen? But it was actually scientifically done, but, you know, it was several years ago, and it was before COVID, so.
The text is working on the display there.
Okay.
We'll get it fixed.
Yep.
At this pause moment, I could also just share, I didn't realize we were going to be talking about more than the FAA recommendation from the SWAC today, but of interest to the team that's working on citing, with this, with this adoption of this FAA recommendation, our number of potential sites is dwindling. And I just returned from Washington DC where I had a chance to visit with our congressional delegation about opportunities to bring additional sites into the mix, potential sites into the mix by looking at some BLM properties. And the, essentially my request to consider a conveyance, purchase, or exchange for a few hundred BLM acres was very favorably received. And I had a chance to visit with Senators Merkley and Senator Wyden. The House was out of session this week, so neither Representative Chavez, Dreamer, or Representative Benz were there to speak with this week. Representative Benz had originally scheduled a meeting with a bunch of us county commissioners from eastern Oregon last week on Friday, but then kind of canceled that at the last minute. But at least the two senators were very favorably disposed towards this. They couldn't promise that this process could be completed in a really, really expedited fashion that might, that will line up perfectly with our timeline for needing a new landfill by, open by 2029. But they want to work with us, and they emphasized that it was really important, I'll share this with my colleagues, it was really important that as this, you know, if we put a request forward, that that request is really bipartisan in nature, that both, you know, our Democrats in the state, in the US Senate and our Republican congressional delegates in the House are both pushing at the same time. So it just kind of sets aside any questions of, you know, whether this is a partisan issue for members of Congress, because unfortunately, that's one of the most, you know, that's one of the first-order questions on things these days that run through the Capitol, is, you know, is this a partisan issue or not?
Thank you, Commissioner Chang, that's encouraging news. I think we have some potential candidate sites that we're looking at, and we'll meet with you and discuss a little bit more detail at some point here and get that process moving forward as well.
Yeah, and I hope that we can work through with the, with the full Board of Commissioners, kind of a formal request process to initiate those discussions with the BLM and, you know, for whatever kind of legislative action is needed.
Well, and there's still going to be other interests on any parcel, so the community, please stay engaged in this, because no matter who points to what location, there's going to be an interesting community discussion.
There's, there are neighbors everywhere.
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
Arrow down.
Right, there we go.
Okay. So just a real quick review here of the process and where we're at. So progress to date, you know, we, and I think the last time I was here in person with Commissioners, it was in July, and we wrapped up the criteria at that time, and those citing criteria is what we moved forward with in the process through about the last six months or so. So the first thing that we did was we reviewed the exclusionary areas. So that was the fatal flaws and other aspects to better define where we were not going to cite a facility. Applied those, the criteria more broadly, including those exclusionary areas, and found areas where we could cite a facility. So it's kind of exclusionary, and then, you know, what are some good areas for citing? And then continued to apply the criteria for broadside screening, and then on to where we're at right now, which is focused site screening. So we're in the process of doing that right now. So we've gone from multitudes of parcels around the county down to 31 that we took into broadside screening, brought that down to 12 that we took into, into the initial focus site screening, and then at this point, that's down further because of the removal of the sites because of the wider radius for the airports, and then also some sites that were not available due to landowners not wanting to sell. And so that was another thing that we pulled out some of the sites for. So this is just, this will just kind of take us quickly through the process. So initial areas identified by the county, this was a long, kind of an initial, just, you know, where are some parcels that could possibly be available? This is exclusionary mapping. The most significant pieces that you see in this mapping are the core sage grass, core area sage grass habitat, which is a very large area to the southeast in the county, and then the urban, urban growth boundaries around the incorporated areas of, you know, of the cities, and then also the airport boundaries as well. This was the airport boundaries of 10,000 feet, so it's not, it's not the five miles that was voted on today. And then that brought us to the broadside screening, kind of, these are the areas of interest that we came up with. The large green areas there were areas that, you know, could maybe pencil out, but they're large parcels of federal lands that early on determined that the process required for going to acquire federal lands would not necessarily fit with the schedule of needing the facility in '29. As Commissioner Chang noted, now we're looking at some of these BLM properties that with some expedited approaches might be available, and so we could look at those again.
So let's acknowledge that, because I understand, you know, if you go to the BLM or Forest Service and you ask for their paperwork to apply to do a transfer or application, you know, the answer is, here's the paperwork, we'll get to you when we get to you, and there's just no hope for, well, when is it going to end, right? So then the other step is to go to the congressional process. And then really that, getting the paperwork created, saying this is the proposal, and then hopefully getting it done in a, you know, a two-year session of Congress. So that gives you hope that, okay, it's either this congressional session or next congressional session. So that, you know, kind of gives you an end to it. It needs to be approved and by both Houses of Congress and then signed by the President, but at least it gives you a little bit more of a two-year window instead of an unknown window.
Yeah, and one thing I would note is that while we haven't dove deep into the requirements for the process, I would imagine that the environmental review, land use reviews and all that are no less strict under this approach than under the standard approach, it's just expediting the process.
Yeah, and getting it prioritized for a given federal land management unit. I mean, the, you know, the Realty staff at any of these agency offices, they have, they have mounds of work to do, and, you know, it's unfortunate that it works this way, but it's also fortunate that it works this way, that a member of Congress can get something placed on the top of the stack. But I did, I mean, you know, we do need to dig, dig more into this, you know, one of the opportunities that was mentioned to me was under the Recreation and Public Purpose Act, the BLM can do a sort of more expedited conveyance of a, up to 600 acres per year to a given entity. So I mean, we were only talking in some of these cases about, you know, 200, 300 acres. So there are, there are opportunities, but we need to, there's a lot of, if we, if we want to pursue this opportunity, we, we need to get organized in various ways, both, both in terms of advocacy and also just in terms of planning and information.
So next up with the screening, so this was 31 sites that we identified through, to take into the broad, broad screening. As you can see, they pretty much throughout the county, east of Bend, all the way through to far eastern, southeastern part of the county, and then a couple down south by La Pine. So in this process then, you know, we took a look at, at the sites, so these potential areas that we're looking at, trying to keep the parcel assemblages down to five or fewer, and in most cases, there are large parcels, and so that, that works fairly, fairly well. Needing 300 to 3,000 acres, the preferred is about 500 acres, so that's about 250 for the facility and 250 for buffers around the facility. And then, you know, we developed some kind of preliminary footprints for different sites just to kind of get a feel for how this would fit, analyzed the parcel level information. So the higher-up stuff we did, just right off of GIS, and then when we drilled down and looked at sites a little bit more closely, we were able to identify some of those specific to the parcels, and so that's how a lot of sites were knocked out through the broadside screening, through both fatal flaws as well as practical flaws. Practical flaws primarily being properties not available because owners didn't want to sell, and then also properties that were just too small, just didn't quite configure right for what the county needs. So as you can see, we have a lot of detail here, and I am not expecting you to look at the, at the, at the details, mainly that we did go through a significant process of looking at, at the areas, really focused on site characteristics and engineering, natural environments, so wildlife and other natural features, and then also land use. And so those are the big key areas that we looked at. So as you can see through this process, we knocked out a lot of the, a lot of the sites, and just, you know, to give you a sense, a lot of sites dropped out because of, well, for instance, the ones down by La Pine, kind of looked good on paper, but once we looked more in detail on groundwater and water resources, they fell out because it's just too shallow groundwater down there. A lot of other sites were very close to sage grass habitat or other, other habitat areas, and so those dropped out. And then just miscellaneous, you know, one, one site, when we looked at it in a little bit more detail, it was actually under current development as a, as a resort. So it was, we were not going to be looking at a landfill at a resort site. And so that brought us down to these sites that were identified for focused screening and in the process that we're in right now. Now, what you'll see here highlighted is the three sites that have been removed near, near the Bend Airport, two due to the Bend Airport, one due to the Redmond Airport under the new five-mile radius, and so those are removed now. And then two sites that you see on here have been removed due to property owners not wanting to sell. And so it leaves at this point, seven, seven sites still in the mix, and those are still, Chad's been working with, with those property owners also just to determine, you know, interest to sell for those private properties. And there are some public properties still in the mix, including two state Department of State land properties down in the, in the southeast corner. So this kind of gives you an idea of what we're, what we're seeing, and, and sites varied significantly, particularly on land use scoring and then also wild, or natural environment scoring. And so kind of weighing that, getting down to the 12 sites, we didn't actually use the scores to get us to that site. scores to get us to that site, to that number, because we got down to 12 pretty much just through fatal flaws and practical flaws, and that brought us down to the 12. And where we're at right now, we're, we're just drilling in deeper on the information and looking at these sites in more detail, particularly for groundwater, geotechnical issues, wildlife issues, and then land use, and specifically what it would take for, for, you know, if, if rezones are needed or other, other methods for, for acquiring those properties or for, for permitting those properties. So we're in this focused screening process right now, and, you know, essentially the bottom line coming out of this, I kind of have gone through most of this detail, but the bottom line is to come out of this process with three to five sites that can go into, it's kind of a short list of sites going into a more detailed focused evaluation. So this is where we do more site reconnaissance, we do some drilling on sites just to get a better feel, and a lot of it is to ensure that the paper review and, and just kind of, you know, lighter review that we've done on these sites is, is true. And, you know, to ensure that the sites are, you know, what we've identified through that process. And then coming back to the, to the commissioners, to the SWAC and the commissioners, early next year with a preferred site coming, you know, out of these three to five sites that we'll take into, into focused investigation.
You're talking about '24, 2024 then?
Yes.
And we're supposed to be, this is supposed to be happening by '29?
Yes.
So that's still going to keep us on that timeline?
It, it will. The, the process that we're going through for, for evaluating these sites really will inform the process we do for permitting and for land use requirements and the like. So none of this is wasted, so to speak, you know, going into, into the, the actual, you know, development of a site. So the permitting and, and then development of a site. You know, if, if this was, was wasted, yeah, I would be concerned, but it, it's not. This is all information that then will be used for that process, for, for the preferred So these were just some, some word clouds that, that were developed just to kind of give you an idea of some of the issues that were out there. So these were on comments that received on all sites through about the middle of January. So a lot of issues around, around wildlife, around zoning, recreation, some about, you know, distance to neighbors, those types of things. And so it's, it's kind of interesting that, so this is for all sites, and then for some of the specific sites, so this is the, what we call the moon pit site, again, wildlife, recreation, those types, because there's not a lot of residential around that, so the residential issues didn't, didn't come up for that site. Golden Basin, similar situation primarily around wildlife as well as recreation. Some of the sites in the Millikan area, it popped up a little bit more with, with the wildlife, definitely recreation, and then a little bit more on residential. And then just, I'll just kind of wrap it up with this because I know we're, we're short on time, but, so public outreach, have gone through a lot of process, primarily using the Solid Waste Advisory Committee as the process for public engagement and engagement of your advisory committee, and really getting a lot of good input from the advisory committee and bringing topics such as the airport radius out to them to get their, their input on that and then bring it to the commission. So, so we're taking, we're going through that process. Next month, we will have the, the focused site screening review with the, with the SWAC, which we will come back with, with the three to five sites to take into, to the shortlist for the, the more detailed focused investigation. And then right now, we're looking at a public, public meeting around April 6th, and that's a little bit fluid just depending on where, you know, where we're at and where the SWAC feels as far as being able to, wanting to take it forward for the public meeting. But I would guess, if it's not April 6th, it's sometime in April or, or May that that, that meeting would happen. And then just, there's 400 interested parties out there, so we'll continue to get comments throughout this process, I'm sure, and we're communicating with those folks throughout this, this time. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. We may have had, did we have? Okay, so the next steps. So, so the open houses, as I, as I discussed, then we get into the detailed site investigations, and then more work with the, with the property owners, and then coming back with the finalist preferred site recommendation next spring, the spring of '24.
So you're going to bring that to the Board of Commissioners, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, three to five sites, and then bring it here for kind of blessing to proceed once again, just like we did today by pulling two off?
And that's going to be next month?
So, so to the SWAC next month, yes.
Right. And then that will come to us after that meeting?
Yes. And that's, and I think that's still a little fluid as far as the timing on that, just, you know, and because we may get comments back from the SWAC that we need to respond to, and so we want to make sure that we have some time for that, that interdepartmental process in there.
Did you say that the state of Oregon owns two of the seven sites remaining?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what, how are they to deal with? Just wondering. We've been trying to do a land exchange up at the fairgrounds, and that's gone on for...
It's challenging.
Yeah, I just wondered.
That was, that was one of my questions was, you know, we, we're, we're having some fairly tense discussions about this land exchange up by, up by Redmond. I mean, I, I would worry that that would spill over into the negotiations over state land property in relation to, to landfill citing. I mean, are you, are you experiencing any of that?
I, I haven't gotten any sense of that. There were, there are some challenges with those, those two state land sites because of existing leases on those properties and what state lands has identified the uses of those properties for. So those will factor into the screening process we're in now on the, on the focused process here.
And I know that, that looking at some of, some potential BLM land disposal sites, there was a, there was one, one of those opportunities had a chunk of state lands near, near, you know, adjacent to it. I, I'm wondering whether you would, basically, I, I want to get a feel for how the, the relationships with the, with the Department of State Lands are on, on these issues for that site as well as the ones out east.
Yeah, you're referring to one of the, the potential sites with, to work with the BLM on?
Yes.
You know, that, that is, is actually in the airport safety restriction area because of the, the airport approach clearance. So our, our approach on that particular area is not contingent on acquiring that state land. I identify that on the, the maps because it was potentially available land, but it, it really doesn't play into this much at all.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
So the seven sites remaining, are all seven 500 acres? Because if that's really what we need and we're thinking about 100-year landfill, why would we, why would we be looking at 300 acres? I mean, I would just hope that all seven would be at least 500 acres.
Yeah, the, the seven remaining sites, if they're not 500 acres, they do have 250 acres as needed for landfill and adequate buffers associated with that. And so that's, that was kind of one of the soft areas around that 500 acres is, you know, what, how much buffer was required for that. The other thing is, we, we actually initially kept it at 300 going into the broadside screening for some sites, just to make sure that there were sites that made it through, and that, you know, maybe, maybe the county got a 50-year site. Because, you know, it, it is one of those things of making sure that you do have, have a site that, you know, that, that you are able to, to develop at least for some period of time. And so that, so we did have 300, 300 acres in there initially, but then when more sites were available that had, you know, the 450 to 500 or more acres, we, we felt that we could pull those out, the smaller sites out.
And another thing too is, sites that had less than 250 acres of buffer were, I believe they were all surrounded by public land, so we didn't have a, a private landowner to, to deal with for, for giving them an adequate buffer.
Thank you.
So one of my thoughts is, next time, maybe in front of us or the solid waste, when we have a good audience, because thanks everybody for paying attention to this, maybe a couple slides about the history of this. So this may be not for parametrics, but for us. You know, before the 70s, it was kind of a don't ask, don't tell situation, and then, then there's some communities that just said, okay, well, the disposal's going to be here. And then state said, let's, let's line these cells and manage them so we understand what's going on, not just point to a spot in the ground, and, you know, what regional landfills are and why it's valuable, and how we did a statistically significant survey, asking everybody, would you, you know, want to send waste outside the county with a lot of trucks? It may be better for the environment to have it locally. So that's our big scenario statement. Couple slides maybe, because we know all this information, not everybody's thought about it. You know, and 50 years ago, it was, well, we should do this more professionally, and now we're just at the next step, so. Couple slides along those lines, maybe when you come next time. And then looking at our agenda today, I thought, just like Commissioner Chang, I thought we were going to be, you know, making a decision about these two locations, so our agenda's been blown out already this morning, but...
We were asked to keep it timely, and I apologize for that.
My, my last question is just, you know, so we have this, we have this process that's been funneling down towards three to five sites, you know, we got to our 12 or 13, and now, you know, we're, our funnel is narrowing very rapidly with, with sites from our 12 or 13 dropping off, and we're talking about putting public land sites in the mix. So I just want to make sure that between now and when we get to three and at three to five, we, there is, there is adequate time to kind of process these public land sites and, and give them full consideration.
I, I, I think there is. I think I used the term on-ramp when, when you and I had spoken about that. So if this, if this BLM opportunity does come to fruition, we can easily add those in. You know, and as far as that funneling process, I, I think the, the sites that have been dropped off, I think this is just part of the focused screening process. You know, we're, we're looking at it more closely and finding issues with them, they, they fall off in the, in the process here, so.
Because definitely, I mean, among the seven that are remaining, you know, I, I would, if we end up citing our landfill in the, in our new solid waste site in the far, far, far eastern corner of Deschutes County, you know, I don't, I don't see that as much more of a benefit than, than sending our waste to some kind of regional facility outside of the county.
I think using the, the state lands as an example, the, the challenges with, with acquiring those likely they'll, they'll, they won't be candidate sites. We have met with Fishing Game and Fish and Wildlife to talk about their processes, and there, there's some potential concerns with those two other far, far eastern sites as well. Again, it's, this is all part of that, that focused process.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody, for paying attention to this process.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Dwight.
Yep.
At this time, item number nine, Notice of Intent to Award Qualified Pool of Fuel Reduction So this will be a notice of intent to award. Kevin, thanks for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kevin Moriarty, County Forester. I'm here today seeking approval and chair signature for document 2023-178. It's the intent to award the 2023 Qualified Pool of Fuel Reduction Contractors. Each year, the Deschutes County issues an RFP for a pool of fuel reduction contractors. The contractor pool identifies contractors who are interested in bidding on fuel reduction projects throughout the year. Once the projects are identified, the contractor pool allows for a quicker turnaround of bids and contract awards. This year, we had 14 contractors that, that did the application properly, and I am recommending for the pool, and that's on Exhibit A. We do have a fair amount of work this year. We already have two contracts that I'm trying to work on, one using the BLM Community Assistance Grant in Eagle Crest, and then we have a, a larger contract in Odin Falls, which will include 26 property owners in two common areas. We also have, if we do get our discretionary funds, we do have some other agreements and awards that we can use those contractors for as well. So this will be very useful to have this pool to, to issue contracts for 2023.
Kevin, I'm sorry, I missed the, the second site that you mentioned. Where, where is that?
It's Odin Falls, which is up north part of the county. It's going to be a juniper thinning project, removing closely junipers that are too close to each other or dead and dying juniper for fuel reduction.
Great. So in our document, we have the distribution of documents, maybe not the spreadsheet you have, but I'm, I'm glad to know that, you know, anybody that wanted to be notified was able to put their name in, and it sounds like we're basically selecting everybody that responded.
Yeah, we did have one person that responded with a blank document.
Oh, okay.
And then I did not put them on the pool, but other than that, yes.
Is this more than last year?
Uh, we had 14 last year as well.
And does restoration have two O's at the end of it?
Um, no, probably not.
I, I was trying to find them to see, so, okay, we probably...
14, I think this list is only 12.
Yeah, that list, that list is not correct. Exhibit A would be the correct list.
So the spreadsheet of all the contractors?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we don't have that, yeah.
That's on Exhibit A.
Okay.
And so why didn't we get that?
Why?
Um, you might, you might have gotten it late because I didn't know it needed to be included in the, in the agenda, but I do have that document in front of me if you need to look at it.
Could you email it to us again just so we have it fresh in our...
Okay, yes, I can do that.
Because people do ask us, who can, who can they go to? And I know the people that did the work last year at Eagle Crest did an excellent job, according to some of the community, so it's always nice to, you know, refer people.
Yeah, okay.
So is there a motion?
Move Chair Signature of Document Number 2023-178, the Notice of Intent to Award the 2023 Qualified Pool of Fuel Reduction Contractors.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Item number...
Kevin, can I just ask one second? Have we gotten any of those juniper grants out through BLM?
We have the, the BLM Community Assistance Grant, which we currently have 50,000 right now. We are trying to get another 100,000 added to that agreement this year. I'm working on that process right now.
To add another 100,000?
Yes.
Right, and Eagle Crest is using some of those original funds?
Eagle Crest is going to be using some of that. That's the first contract I mentioned. There'll probably roughly be around 40,000 left, and then we'll have an additional 100,000 that we can use for fuel reduction treatments.
Okay, because I was speaking to some people in the public the other day, and I did ask if it be added to our county newsletter. People go, well, how can we find these things out? So we honestly need to do a press release or something on those BLM funds. We've had them for quite a while, and I know you started that till last November, but I still would like some kind of press release, if that's possible.
Yeah, I, that and all the other agreements that we have in place, I, I would like to possibly hold off for, for one month on a press release, but I do, our intent is to release that information so we can request projects that people have. We also have the Buttes to Basin Agreement, which is through ODF and the Forest Service. We have 50,000 in that as well, and potentially receiving another 50,000. So there's actually three agreements right now that we have funding for, and so I'm just trying to get everything together before we start trying to do notices.
Okay, great, because people in the community would appreciate, you know, being able to apply.
Yeah.
Soon.
Well, we, we can use our Project Wildfire media outlets to, to send that information out as long as the, as well as the Deschutes County Newsletter. I think those would be...
Good.
Two good ways. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We're juggling all those balls and keeping those, keeping those funds hitting the ground.
Item number 10, Presentation to Deschutes Trails Coalition on Stewardship Grants. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for listening. Well, good morning, Commissioners and all. Thank you for this opportunity. It was about a year ago, about 13 months ago, that I last was here with you, and we were pitching the proposal to fund the Deschutes Trails Coalition Stewardship Grant. And so it's great to be here 13 months later, to be sharing with you where we ended up. We just recently awarded nine grant awards and the process that we went through to get there. So yes, glad to be here to celebrate these successes, share this process, and then answer any questions that you might have. And then, am I advancing this slide?
There we go.
All right, so just a general overview. We had 10 projects submitted that met the basic, all of them met the basic eligibility requirements. A total of 808,000 was requested. 540 was awarded, 540,000 was awarded. And then 10% of that went, the de minimis went to program building and administration. We, the advisory committee decided to fund nine projects. Six of those were fully funded, totaling $279,556. And then three were partially funded. The total for those was requested at 504,000, and we chunked those out into smaller increments to be funded at 260,444. We had a good variety of projects. Four of them were on-the-ground implementation-type projects. Three of them were capacity building. One was a survey and design, and one was a land acquisition project. The location of the projects, this is really what we were hoping for, was a good geographic distribution across Deschutes County. So we had a project from the Badlands in Lapine, Newberry National Volcanic Monument, at Shovlin Park, at Three Creek and Sisters, within the Three Sisters Wilderness, and then kind of more broadly throughout Deschutes County with those projects that were the capacity building type. The communities served, you know, some of these projects really focused on service to the equestrian community, mountain bikers, trail users with disabilities, gravel cyclists, families, young children, and senior citizens, wilderness users, hikers, and really all trail users. So here's kind of a snapshot of the projects that were funded, in really no particular order here. I can run through them. ONDA, Oregon Natural Desert Association, applied for a grant to fund some work that was part of a wilderness plan for that area with the BLM that was really just waiting for this type of opportunity to implement, focusing on some decommissioning of user-created trails, trail maintenance, and trailhead improvements. Central Oregon Trail Alliance, COTA, they were awarded a grant at 119,075 to create a replicable training program. They have numerous trails. They manage over, I think it's over 500 miles of trail within the county, and many of those trails are pretty complex in terms of their design and maintenance skills required. So they're wanting to build a program that they can ensure that into the future that they have the capacity to maintain these trails to these standards. Friends of Central Cascades Wilderness, they applied and were awarded $13,140 for a trailhead host cabin on a trailer. So it's a portable cabin. It's to house the volunteers and interns that serve as the trailhead staffers for the, some of the popular wilderness areas. This one is for Devil's Lake. And so it's a place where people can get information, learn more about wilderness, the wilderness, excuse me, permitting system, and then any other questions that they have about the forest in general. Oregon Equestrian Trails was awarded a grant for $55,395 to replace the, to repair the corrals at both Three Creek and Palina Lake, up in the monument. And currently, the state of the corrals was in a state of disrepair, to the point that it could actually injure horses. So they were using this model that they've applied at many other sites. They've got the skills and know-how within their group, and then will be working with the Heart of Oregon Corps Crew to replace those remaining, too. All of the other horse corrals have been updated throughout the area. So that's a nice capstone for that project. Discover Your Forest was awarded $80,000. This was one that was partially funded. They are starting an ambassador program, and this dovetailed nicely at the time this application was submitted. They were also working with the Forest Service through some of the wildfire crisis strategy funding to fund an ambassador program that more heavily focused on the effects of wildfire and prescribed burning, and what we're trying to do locally to support that and minimize risk of fire. And so we are funding the kind of trails portion of that to really round that out. Because when visitors have questions, they don't ask one person one question, they don't know who, they're asking general questions. And so it's a way to make that a really robust program. The Deschutes Land Trust was awarded $80,444 for the Spectre Ranch Acquisition Project. That's a large parcel of land that's down, it abuts the Newberry National Volcanic Monument down near Lapine. And it is in a parcel that is going to be protected, and then the trail planning portion of that is to have accessible trails in that area, as well as the natural resource protection happening there.
And you, yeah, I do want to discuss that a little bit, but let's get through the spreadsheet here.
Ben Parks and Rec Department, Shovlin Park Trail Improvement. So they, there's a road behind the gate there that's really a great place for kids to learn to ride bikes, and all sorts of users of all abilities to use that trail, and it's fallen into disrepair. So doing some seal coating of that to preserve that, as well as replacing some picnic tables and some other recreation infrastructure in the Shovlin Park area. And that was funded at $43,560. We opted not to fund the second Ben Parks and Rec Department project, the West Ben Trail Restoration Project, the design, and that was in part because we were trying to maintain that diversity of projects, types of projects. And so that one, with the funding scenarios we created, that one didn't compete as highly as far as the advisory committee was concerned. Deschutes National Forest was awarded $100,000 for the design and survey of the Trail of Molten Land within Newberry National Volcanic Monument. And that is a trail that is partially constructed at this point to be accessible. It needs some improvements on that existing stretch, as well as an opportunity to design an accessible portion for the full length of the trail. And then last but not least, Dirty Free Hub, a local organization that supports gravel road, or gravel bike riding in the area. They, not only in the area, actually internationally, as far as Tasmania, actually. They have routes for gravel riders, and they, they're updating their platform to, their website platform, and information, route guides, that include information about the natural resources, the area that they're protecting, there's a conservation message promoting stewardship, as well as the route information to provide opportunities. And this kind of helps to balance out some of those use conflicts that we see on the trails by offering these opportunities on roads.
So they're spending 24,000 on their website, but none of that actually went to any gravel then, for any trails?
It's not actually there, that's probably not the way to frame is the website. It's more the, it's housed on their website, but it's the individual gravel routes that has the mapping, the route mileage, the, you know, the concerns about, hey, you're passing through an area like Skyline Forest, educating people about that area that they're going through, okay? If there are any wildlife concerns, how to behave around wildlife. So it's more comprehensive, and I would say, I've been really impressed with them as an organization. I think they do a lot in really promoting the wise use of our recreation facilities in central Oregon and beyond. And so we felt, and also the sort of indirect impact of providing recreation opportunities that aren't, that are not trail-based, that access some of our other thoroughfares, such as forest roads, is an overall benefit to the trails community.
Sort of like a guidebook, but online.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That's a better, yeah, guidebook is probably a better term for it. And so that brings us to a total of $540,000 that was awarded to those grants.
So nothing really went to Redmond or Terrabon, to those communities?
We didn't get any, any applications from those areas. These are all the applications that came in, and only one of them was not funded. So no, we don't have anything specifically in those areas.
I did, I had a chance to interact with some of the, some of the groups who are involved in stewardship of Smith Rock State Park, those, some of that kind of community volunteer groups, and I let them know about this opportunity, but.
Yeah.
You can tell people, you can make opportunities available, but you can't make people apply.
True, yeah. And it being in its first year, you know, it's, it's not something that it's, you know, a well-known opportunity. So we did our best to get the word out, and I think we did a reasonable job with it. But yeah, so those were the 10 that came in.
So as I called you yesterday, I'm like, oh, I, there's great investments here, but I just have a feel there's a little bit misalignment of the expectations of these dollars originally, you know, and I, towards the Spectre Ranch acquisition, it's close to where I live. But when I look back at the, you know, proposal to invest unallocated TRT and the agreement in place, it was all about deferred trail maintenance, infrastructure needs, and then it just felt like, ugh, you know, buying private property to add to, it just felt like, oh, I didn't mean to do that. I didn't, I don't support that decision of the group. So I'm bringing that up today. You know, this is a, you know, the ask was for a million dollars a year ongoing, and now I just, yeah, we have a misalignment of maybe what we thought we were going to do, or what I thought I was investing in. So I do want to have that discussion today. And as I say, the other Commissioners may have heard about this, and I tried to make some phone calls before today also to let people know. But, you know, that, yeah, so the ranch acquisition project at $80,000, and you know, you mentioned it was a good discussion at the committee. I'm sure everybody there is like, yeah, what could we do with these dollars? But, you know, the agreement we put in place, it just talks about trails and trail-related infrastructure, deferred trail maintenance, infrastructure throughout the central Oregon exceeds $10 million was the mention. So.
Right. That's the first line of the summary.
Yeah.
I guess what I would go to, or where my brain goes to, is this investment was intended to expand and enhance and maintain recreation opportunities in, within the county. And my impression is that these lands, having been in private land ownership before, were not actually accessible to the public. Through this.
That's the definition of private land.
Yes. And so through this, through this acquisition, we've expanded public access to excellent recreation opportunities in South County. And for me, that meets the intent of, you know, of this investment, you know, to expand and enhance and preserve recreation opportunities and access in, throughout the county. So if this is, if this is a place that was not publicly accessible before, but now is publicly accessible, I don't think that that justifies using, you know, the county unrestricted transient room tax revenues through this program to do the whole acquisition. But I do think that that is worth a piece of this acquisition project. And, you know, I would be curious what the total cost of this acquisition was, you know, and to be able to compare that to, you know, this $80,000 that came from, from this investment.
I asked yesterday, I said, you said you had gotten permission through either Greg or Wayne, and I'm going, there has, there should be an email that says that they approved this, because our second line of our summary clearly states, we have a 10 million, exceeding $10 million is the deferred trail maintenance and infrastructure. So now, not only have we not approached all that 10 million, we've added more property, you know, to needs, that will be, need to be maintained. So yeah, it doesn't seem like we were really following what the summary guidelines were, and I can't believe that we don't have an email out there that says they gave you, that they said this is permission, because it doesn't follow our summary.
Yeah, so a couple responses to that. You know, the conversation within the advisory committee, so, well, I guess I will back up and first say, so there'd been a lot of back and forth between me and then either Greg Munn at the time, then there was Wayne Lowery, now there's Robert Tintle, Nick, you and I spoke at one point. There's a lot of back and forth, depending on where we were in the development of the grant. And so questions would arise as we would get to these various points. So I don't remember who I spoke with, but at the time, I was like, oh, this project is different than the rest. It's distinct in its own way. And so I said, well, I'll do a check on that. I called, the answer I got said, nope, there's nothing about TRT that says you cannot use it for, in this way. So then I brought it to the advisory committee, because that's the whole point of having this advisory committee, is to follow the process and evaluate it just as any other project. So that's what we did. The total project cost is $4.2 million for the acquisition and the establishments piece of it. So this is a pretty small portion of that, arguably. As far as the conversation went with the advisory committee, there were people on either end of that, like, wait, this is so different that it just doesn't fit. And then others that were saying, the majority that were saying, no, it is so foundational to trails, is the ground beneath, you know, beneath it, that, wow, what a great opportunity to be part of this legacy, and we felt that it did support that. So I, I mean, I just, I can only walk you through what went on on our side of things, and then it's ultimately up to you to decide where we go from here. But that was the logic behind it and the conversation that was, that was had.
One way of looking at this is, if this is a $4.2 million project, maybe $80,000 buys you, you know, a 50-yard by 50-yard space that actually ends up being the trailhead for a trail that runs through this property, which I believe trailheads was, was one of the project types that is, was specifically called out, you know, as eligible. So I, there's this, I mean, it seems like we have a disagreement on what the intent of this was, and in such cases, I think the only thing we have to fall back on is, you know, then it gets all legalistic, and we need to go back to the agreement and, you know, determine whether this is, this was the specified process, and whether this is ineligible or an ineligible use of these funds.
One other alternative that I will throw out there, too, in speaking with Rika Ayat, who's here from the Deschutes Land Trust, is that included in that $4.2 million package for that acquisition was also the establishment. So that's removing hazardous structures, things that prepare the site to be used by the public and for trail infrastructure. So with that, you know, kind of in your line of thinking, Phil, if it feels better to apply those to a certain piece of that, you know, that's, that's another way that this could be approached.
Oh, so, I mean, as I say, the message was, there's, you know, let's not, let's empower the golden goose to keep laying some eggs here and do great things and do the investments. And it just feels like it steps right out when we're buying, you know, private property, putting it into a, you know, a trust, which, I mean, the mission is wonderful, but that was not the intention for myself, as, you know, from my position as an elected commissioner representing the people, transient room tax dollars, it wasn't to take other private property and put it under a land trust. It was to improve parking lots, trails, and, you know, let people do good things and enjoy the public land. So I do feel it's just out of what my intentions were. I mean, it may or may not be allowed by the agreement, we could get there, and then we could debate it, even if we wanted to push hard. So then, you know, and I mentioned this yesterday, this is my thought, I called, I wanted to have this discussion with the other Commissioners. You know, in the end, I just don't support these dollars for that purpose. You know, if we're going to put TRT dollars towards something, and it's going to buy private property, that's a whole different discussion. So we could, you know, expand the definition and not think that this violated anything, but I just don't agree with that policy. I'm not here to buy private property with transient room tax dollars. So.
If the concern is, if the concern is about the, you know, the net of private property, you know, within the county, private versus public, if the concern is, I mean, one concern that I would really share is, is maintaining working lands, working forest and range and farmlands in the community. But I have to, I have to emphasize that the land trust plays an extremely important role in maintaining working lands in the community, not necessarily in this specific case, but in many of the conservation easements that the land trust executes. easements that the land trust executes with private landowners, they are working with, you know, a, a farmer or a rancher that is specifically interested in maintaining lands as working lands, as private working lands, but is also, has, has an interest in maintaining, in, in getting a conservation easement on a portion of their lands to protect certain kinds of values and provide public access and things like that. So I, I, I hope that we can, you know, if your concern is about, is about, you know, the public-private land mix and about, and about, you know, particularly about working lands, which again is a concern that I share, like, I just want to offer up that the land trust plays a really important role in maintaining private working lands as working lands in our community.
Okay, let me read the next line in the summary that we were given. Existing and predicted financial resources are insufficient to address the most basic maintenance needed to sustain our trails in their current state, let alone the growing deferred maintenance backlog. So one of the projects was a guidebook, and that was 24,000, but I'm thinking, like, you're going to be out there and you're going to be fixing the trails with the millions of people that visit them every year, and so I'm like, yeah, I just feel like the summary that we were given doesn't exactly fit some of the projects. Now, you say it's a balance, but I'm saying, we're reading that there are things out there that need to be done, and you, that's, you know, according to the summary, that's what it says, so I'm just, you know, you're looking at it as taking private property and putting it into the system, and I'm saying, saying that we were told there's $10 million worth of deferred maintenance, and what did we really, what deferred maintenance really did happen here with the 540,000? You know, you take the 80 off, and then you take the 24 off, you know, and we had 10 million? We were told you have $10 million, so I really want the money to go to the maintenance, deferred maintenance trail, you know, because it, you know, if we're told it's $10 million, a lot of this money didn't go to that.
And as we brought up before, you know, these were the applications that we received. We outreach with the intent of, you know, we, and I can walk you through the process, that's what the rest of the slideshow is, about the process that we followed, to what degree you're interested in, but we outreach as widely as we could, we hosted online webinars, we worked with COIC to develop the program to help get the word out, we, we broadcasted through all of our partners and social media, and at the end of the day, this is, this is what, what was submitted, and, and-
Joanna, is there not really $10 million worth of deferred maintenance out there, or is it just because no one really wants to step up and do the work?
There absolutely is, the-
There is.
Some of the prob, okay, so, so some of the, the, if I'm, if I'm to forecast why we, we got 10, these 10, sometimes there's things like, one thing that I presented last year in this, talking about this whole patchwork quilt idea of funding, is that there's a lot of grant funds out there that only fund maintenance, or that won't fund maintenance, they will only fund new construction of things, and so they don't fund the NEPA to get projects done, they, they don't fund planning and survey and design, and so those projects get hung up, those are part of that $10 million of deferred maintenance. So some of the, the, what I felt like was a great value of these unrestricted funds, was that we could fund design and survey, to survey a, a piece of, a trail for accessibility, you know, we could use the funds for capacity building that will address the maintenance on the ground, but there has to be an upfront investment, it's not all about implementation on the ground all the time, there's all these other pieces that need to be done, and frankly, there's just not a lot of funding sources that fund that. So that's, and I thought we were very clear about that when we presented, you might remember the patchwork graphic that, that showed, this is what, how all these things fit together. So I, I think we did everything that we could to get the word out there, I think, I'm, I'm very proud of the process that we followed, I think this is a great representation of projects, from my professional opinion, as in the trails world for 25 years, these are all really critical parts and pieces of the overall trail picture. Yeah, it, no, no one wants to fund maintenance, there's no big splash for that, but it's, it's needed, no one wants to fund the NEPA study, because it does, there's no splash to that, but those are equally as important parts of this whole process, and, and so that's, that's why I, at the end of the day, feel very good about what we've come up here, with here.
And I just want to, yeah, I want to pull us up to the 90,000 foot level again, and emphasize that the, this, this recreational infrastructure, these outdoor amenities, are what brings people here to central Oregon, which, what is what generates transient room tax revenue. And for me, when we were initially discussing this, the idea that we would, that we would take care of the, you know, the, the golden goose that, that lays the eggs, is, was absolutely a piece of this, but another piece of this is that recreational demand, you know, particularly during COVID in, in our region, has just been steadily ramping up, and to meet that recreational demand, we need not only to do our best job at maintaining what we've got, but we need more trails, we need more trails, we need more trailheads, we need more places where people can go, we need more parks, and I very much, it, it was very much my intention that this program would be able to, to address some of that need as well, not just to maintain what we've got, but to help us expand opportunities. So I, I, I see everything on this list as being consistent with that intent, and again, if we want to, if, if we want to pick at this more, I think it's probably time to just go to the agreement and see, you know, get a legal determination on what is and isn't allowed.
Well, so, as I said, I just, when I saw this all come together, I knew we had to have a conversation about it, what was the intention of this, I mean, I want to invest in everything, let's celebrate the great place we live, and putting these dollars in was, you know, a common ground for us, and all of a sudden, I'm like, oopsie, you know, I, there's a few little things here I didn't, didn't quite see coming. So we don't need to take this any farther today, I mean, let's just acknowledge where we're at, you know, it's, it's wonderful, we even had these resources to be able to say, go do good things, and now let's just align our expectations and where we're going to conclude, because I know this was a multi-year ask too, right, so now this is going to be a discussion into our next budget cycle, and we've got a lot of people asking, in fact, if you watch, the next item or the next couple items, there's going to be other asks for transient room tax. So yeah, if you want to finish it off, we, yeah, we're so behind today.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, and I, unless you would like me to go through the, the process, I was going to go through the timeline and how, you know, how the process that we went through building the program, and that, if you're interested in that, I can go through that, if in the interest of time, you'd rather-
Yeah, I'd rather move on.
You could send this, you could send this to your slide deck.
So yes, I, I will, I will happily do that.
That would be great.
So just the, the, you know, kind of in, in closing, this was from, I went to the Envision Bend event last week, and this is what came up on the screen in terms of, here are the top 10 community values as ranked by survey respondents, and the outdoors is far and above, and then seen, followed by scenery, parks and green spaces, those really are the values that are present here, and I don't think that's going away, I, I don't think that's going to change, and so I, I hope that there, now that we have this, this program built, yes, maybe there's some lessons learned or some further conversations as we go into the future, but I'm, I'm very pleased with what we were able to fund this year, and I thank you very much for your support, and I look forward to having further conversations on how we move forward from here.
And we will continue to keep more on this too.
And what, they have what, another five months in order to get these done? It said something about an 18-month project, or will it take this year and next year?
It will ta, it's a two-year, a two-year grant, so that they'll have time, for some of those larger-scale projects like NEPA, survey and design, it'll give them two full field seasons to complete those things.
So we're talking '23, '24 then?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, so, and we'll, we'll keep lines of communication open here, as I said, I just needed to have this conversation, make sure the other commissioners knew where I was at on this. It's exciting we're able to make these investments.
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. So at this time, item number 11, Presentation for Workforce Housing Proposal. Thank you very much for joining us, Sherri Help.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBonne, Commissioner Dare, and Commissioner Chang.
So yeah, we've given the opportunity to drop a big idea on us here today, and I know we've talked about this a little bit in passing, so what else can we do for, for housing opportunities? Thank you.
So first, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to move this idea forward from all the kitchen tables in our county to this table, which is very important and can move some things forward. So, good morning, Commissioner DeBonne, Commissioner Dare, and Commissioner Chang. I really appreciate you bringing forward this conversation and stepping out into a new space of talking about workforce housing. It's the single most important issue facing all of our businesses, it's what causes me to lose a lot of, a lot of sleep and a lot of other business owners. When we hire someone from outside of Deschutes County, we don't really know if they will come and join our staff until they find housing, and sometimes that doesn't come to fruition, because there just isn't enough housing available in the workforce area. And so I wanted, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about me as a business owner, and that's what's driving me today, is I have 67 employees, and when we started our business in 2004, most of our employees owned their own home. That's not the case today anymore, because housing is exponentially expensive. The lowest cost house for sale in Bend today is-
A lot of money.
There's lowest cost, and then there's the median.
$430,000, and so that's the lowest-cost home that's available, and there's one at that price range, and so that's, gives you a little bit of context for, for the conversation today. And so what I want to do is, is talk a little bit about government-supported, government-supported programs and community-driven ideas, and how they're going to be the biggest part of the solution, and how we need to ignite public-private partnerships. And so I want to go through the how, the why first, which is on your sheet, the why is the current housing needs. Deschutes County needs 55,887 homes by 2040, and Deschutes County needs 11,412 homes for the 80% to 120% of area median income in the next 20 years. To define that down a little bit further, for a family of four, that's between $71,900 a year and $107,880 a year, which would lead you to an affordable price range, which would be defined by HUD, that's where we're getting the statistics, is $315,587 to $473,513, and so that was what we need for workforce housing. Workforce housing covers a tremendous amount of jobs that we all count on every day to make our county run and our state. We have food service employees, we have teachers, we have Ben Lepine school workers, we have nurses and, and technicians, custodians at St. Charles, doctors, we have people in the construction industry like Brightwood Corporation, and a minimum wage employee at this point in time in Deschutes County makes $28,080 a year. And so we want to be able to make sure that all of our workforce, including our police, our fire, our nurses, our teachers, our hospitality workers, are able to own homes, and as we attract people to these jobs in the future, we're going to have to attract some of them from outside of the area and make sure that they're able to afford homes. And so that's the why, that's the need, that's what we're missing, and that's why business owners are really struggling at this point to be able to create the workforces that they need, and not just business owners, public entities as well. So the how is to create a housing trust fund. Now, this is not going to be a silver bullet, I want to be clear that this, this problem does not have a silver bullet, it has more of a patchwork quilt solution look to it. There's going to be many solutions that are going to be needed. This one, I think, is very important because it ignites the, the public money to ignite the private companies to be able to build the homes. Right now, there's such a gap in funding that is able to, to build workforce housing, no one is building it because it's not cost-effective, and one of those reasons is a lot of the land use system that has failed us, the land is way too expensive, the infrastructure needs on the land, and the cost of the home is just too expensive to produce, to get to market for our workforce. And so what, what the proposal here is to build a housing trust fund, and that would be funded by the unallocated transient room tax dollars at $2 million a year. The ask is not per year at this point, because I think that it's important that it is proven to you that these dollars have been used to produce what is said and what is asked, and so this is just going to be a one-year ask that is hopefully renewed year after year, because it produces great results. But being fiscally prudent, I just wanted to put in front of you that this is an, a pilot program, if you will, to produce workforce housing, and hopefully the accolades are so large, and it's such a great program that you can't turn it down next year. And so what is asked is a $30,000 developer credit per workforce home upon completion, and that during, to offset the high costs that the market prohibitive conditions have set, and incentivizing free market development, because right now, the free market can't develop homes at the prices that are before us, and so we can't leave our workforce behind, we have to come up with some creative solutions, and this is the creative solution. This home must be built in the county in a price range that would be allowable for buyers within the 120, 80% to 120% of AMI. This would fund 66 workforce homes in our county, and what it would cost the county would be $1,000 per year for each workforce home, because what we would like to do is deed these homes for 30 years, so that they are in the workforce of 80% to 120% of AMI for 30 years, and so it will be a $1,000 a month investment. I personally can't come up with something more fiscally responsible than that to help our workforce be inside of a home. Now, there's deed restrictions that I believe should be placed on these homes to make sure that they stay inside of the workforce. One would be that, that the 30-year deed restriction that we talked about, the qualifying income between 80% and 120% of area median income, which would be adjusted annually by the HUD requirements, and the home sales prices would be in alignment with the area median income requirements, so they define the, the sale price as well. And then there would be, they would be required to work in Deschutes County, because if we're going to build workforce housing, we're going to have to have some sort of restriction that says you work in Deschutes County. We don't want to build homes for other folks at this point with this program, and it must be a primary residence, we don't want somebody that only is living here part-time, and that you are a US citizen or have a permanent resident alien status, so that, that is a HUD requirement as well, and that the home meets all planning and building code requirements, so that it, that you qualify, so that it's a, a nice home and a good structure that's safe for livability, and at closing each deed restricted home, meets all the eligible requirements, will be given a $30,000 check. That way, the program is less intensive to, to certify, because you'll be having the title company certify the check, and then the other thing that I really like about this is the county doesn't put out any money until someone gets a workforce home. So you're, the money that you're allocating would be just put into play at the moment that it is given out, so I, I really think that that is important as well. And then the last one is to make sure that we can have these folks build some wealth so that they can go on to their next home, but not to exceed the amount of money that would take it out of the workforce housing status. So we don't want to build workforce housing and have our builders build workforce housing and do their very best to scrape these by- and do their very best to scrape these by and get these out, and then have someone come and take them out of the workforce housing status. So if you do a 1%, 1% that they can capture of profit out of the home per year, that will maintain in the cost of living. And this is along the lines of the CORE model.
It is along CORE's model?
Yeah.
Because I thought 1% seemed so, I realize there, you know, if they're purchasing it for 330,000, that 1% appreciation is, could be pretty minimal. But that's what CORE is doing? Okay.
So 2% of cost-of-living adjustment is kind of standard. So to be on the air of cautious side was 1%. And this is all a proposal, Commissioner Daire, so can be changed.
Well, I just, you know, I feel like we definitely, we need, so these people can buy houses. I'm working on that pilot project for the manufactured homes north of town, so...
Which is another very important solution.
Exactly. So, I mean, but it's, you know, this is even better, because if you can purchase your first home this way.
Yeah, and so what would be, so the thinking is that the average home is held for seven years. So that would be a 7% take out of the home and adjustment in the cost range, which would leave it in, inside the same workforce housing percentage of area median income of 80% to 120% that it came in, if cost-of-living adjusts at the same level of inflation, which it currently isn't, but I don't think we should build it towards our current inflation status because I'm hoping that declines. And so this is the proposal, and I wanted to thank COBA, Central Oregon Village Association, for writing a letter of support and being part of developing this proposal. I wanted to thank Hayden Homes as well for helping with this proposal and also being very supportive. The Ben Chamber wrote a letter of support, Visit Central Oregon wrote a letter of support, and Visit Bend as well, and CORE. And so I wanted to thank them all for writing letters of support. And then there was this outpouring of community letters that came in that I had never spoken to these folks, and I wanted to thank them all. Louis Capizio, Devra Ogara, Beth Jacoby, Mark McConnell, Dennis Labuda, Alisa Chang, Chang, and Anis Henson, Michelle McKay, and Eric Lang for taking time to write about how important workforce housing was to them and that they supported this idea. And so this is a big idea. I just floated it out for you all. I want to thank you for starting the conversation, allowing me to do this, and then I want to open it up for your questions and ideas, because I think that as proposals come forward, the more people that have their vision and lens on it and put their stamp on what needs to change, it just becomes stronger. But the real message here is that our workforce is hurting, it's not sustainable the way it is. We need folks to be able to have their first home and build enough of a deposit to move on to their second. And we can do that with a $2 million investment from you and our county into workforce housing and get 66 homes and be able to start moving this conversation forward.
You realize, you said you had 67 employees now? And I'm thinking like, well, I know, there's, yes, I mean, and you know your employees. How many now today do you know, Sherri, have their own home? You said it's totally changed from when you started.
It's changed. I have a lot of employees that I've had a long time. I have two employees with me that currently started with me in 2004.
Oh, great.
And so some of them have their own home, but they are the ones that have lived in our area longer when, when there was more workforce housing available. I don't have employees that come and start very often that own their own homes anymore.
So, yeah, I got all kinds of questions about this. I guess after we get through this a little bit, the question of the day is, do we want to take this farther? Because we're not going to solve it all today or make it official today, because it'd be a lot more kind of, you know, structured of what we're talking about.
Originally, when we talked about this a week or two ago, you said you were going to talk to Lily Morgan about some kind of legislation. Are you working on that at all? I don't see it here.
So I'm working, I'm working with a lot of...
Yes, Representative Morgan.
I'm working with a lot of different legislators to see who would like to put a companion program to move it forward. I think a really great companion program from a state level would be to do a $15,000 match for every $15,000 that is spent in any county, not specifying what source of funds that the county would need to use, because I think counties have different sources of funds available, right, as you all know. And so if the state could do a $15,000 match, then that would take it down to a $500 per year investment per deeded workforce housing unit. And I think that is a really prudent use of money, but it also takes into account that we're igniting our private workforce, right? This makes it available for our builders to build at this rate, because if we can't utilize our private workforce, we're going to fail. And so what we have to do when we're looking at workforce housing is make sure that we are igniting our private workforce to be able to build these homes at a cost that they can make pencil for their businesses, right? And so this is very important. But I think if we could get a state match, that would be great. So I'm working on that as quickly as I can, but yesterday was Valentine's Day, which, you know, is the Super Bowl for all restaurant tours.
Yeah.
So I haven't, I haven't quite gotten it to the finish line yet, but I will continue to work hard at it.
Well, I was thinking if you could, if you could get money from the state, we could actually do more than the 66.
Yeah, so if we got a match, then for, you know, the $2 million, we could get 132 homes, and now we're really starting to move the needle. And it would be a $500 investment per home, per year, from the state and from the county. That would be really incredible. So I would love all of your support in helping move the legislators to, to look for a proposal, to look for a bill that could move that in an investment. But I think part of the thing that would help move the state legislators is your investment as a county, to say, hey, this is, we understand, all of our businesses are struggling with this, and all of our, you know, constituents are struggling with this, and this is really important, and we're going to put our dollars on the issue that are important for our businesses and our community members, so our community can continue to thrive. And now we have some momentum, because you would be the first ones in the state to do something like this. And the state is putting together a lot of workforce committees to bring up solutions, but you could have a solution in place and offer up a challenge for them, to say, hey, we're doing this, and you have an $89 billion budget. How about if you match $15,000 per home?
Yeah, and there are, there are definitely also opportunities to align this with the governor's current focus on housing, and particularly workforce and affordable housing. So, yeah, at the, at the highest level, I would say, because we should start there, and just, just to indicate support or not support, that, you know, in the ideal world, I would love to see this proposal go below 80% AMI. I would love to see this proposal address rental opportunities, affordable rental opportunities as well as affordable homeownership. But 80 to 20 is a, is an extremely important slice of our, our local workforce, and homeownership is, you know, is the ideal. I mean, we would love to provide homeownership opportunities to everyone because we can't, you know, there's, I think we, we do need to focus on rental opportunities as well. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do homeownership opportunities if we can't do rental opportunities as well. So, you know, this is, I would love to see this proposal do, you know, go broader than it, than it is, but with the kinds of dollars that we're talking about, you know, a focused investment makes, makes sense. And I think it underscores the extremely important principle that, and, you know, finding that in this day and age, with land costs what they are, with construction costs what they are, and with infrastructure costs what they are, it takes public investment to put housing within reach of our local, of people making local salaries and wages. We cannot do that without, without public investment. And as, as we've, as we're, as we're alluding to, making a, you know, planting a flag in the stand with some local funding, local public investment, will leverage state and federal investment and private investment in the long run. So it's a, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a tremendous multiplier to be considered with the dollars that we would allocate to a proposal like this. So at the, at the high level, I am, I am supportive of moving this forward. I have a lot of questions as well. And, and, you know, particularly about how this would run, you know, how we would operate this program, because, you know, having the, having the takeout at the very end, you know, the $30,000, it does help to streamline things some, but, I mean, there are all sorts of questions about, you know, you know, who's going to determine people's eligibility, and who's going to track, you know, who's going to maintain a deed restriction for 30 years or longer. There are a lot of questions about essentially how you would manage this program that I think we need to iron out.
Can I address a couple of those things, Commissioner Chang?
You can, or we, I mean, we, we can just get into them in a little bit, too.
Okay.
Commissioner DeBonne might.
Just a couple thoughts, you know, required to be currently employed in Deschutes County. I mean, that's kind of the bottom line right there. I like the idea of 80 to 120 because there's plenty of programs for, you know, below 80, basically, you know, the federal tax credits, the, you know, our Housing Authority, there's all kinds of things, and they basically just stop right at that 80. So this is that next magic step, 80 to 120 for an employee in Deschutes County, somebody that's employed. And then also that seven-year window kind of concept, you know, this may not be the long-term housing, but it's the starter home, it's the beginning opportunity, it's a place for somebody to settle in. So it looks like there's, there's some buy-in and excitement up here for this. As I say, when I look at it, you know, what's a housing trust fund, you know, who runs that? How many, what's the overhead? You know, so there are all kinds of questions. But I think generally, it looks like there's support for moving forward a little bit. You know, we're talking about a $2 million ask for either one-time or annually transient room tax. We're basically, it's nice to have this money, I'm representing the people of Deschutes County, it's nice to have this money in a bank account, but we're spending it like two and three times right now with all these asks. So we've got a day of reckoning coming pretty quick here about how are we going to spend these dollars also? So I'm just letting you know, you can ask for anything, but we'll figure out if, can we really start to write checks back out or make long-term commitments.
Well, our, our Tracer did give us, excuse me, our CEO did give us a whole breakdown. So we've got our analysis here.
Well, and this was, you know, just previously, it was $600,000, go improve trails, which is wonderful, a great investment. So we've just got a lot of asks coming down those lines right now.
Yeah, and that, I mean, the, you know, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read Robert's, our CFO's memo yet, but I mean, my understanding is that we have, we have fully allocated out the budgeted TRT for the fiscal year that we're currently in. So we, I believe we are talking about something that would, that could start in, you know, July 1st, you know, the next fiscal year, if, if we want to proceed with this, this concept. But I, I don't believe there is any unallocated TRT just waiting.
There's a fund called that, but it may not be extra money.
Waiting, yeah, I mean, there, you know, there is, I mean, there was, there were decades when the amount of TRT we were taking in was, you know, you know, was, was not quite enough even to cover basic commitments to the fair or the sheriff's office and other things. And then we, you know, we hit a period where it was just exploded, and then there was a, there was, you know, a backlog or a pool of unallocated, and we have, at this, at this point, pretty much allocated all of that out and are living year to year. And with the, you know, with the courthouse expansion project coming up, we have, we will have some very hard choices to make.
The good news, we did get an email from Jackie, and she said the average homeowner would have approximately $76,000 worth of equity after 10 years. So that's what I was worried about, because, you know, it's so much better to own your own home, actually, it's, it costs less than renting sometimes. And, you know, it's, and then you develop, you build up your equity, and that's really what this community needs, is people that are working hard deserve to be able to build up their equity, too. So I thank you guys so much for putting the time into this.
The appreciation in home value, that's one thing, and, you know, that, the way that this proposal addresses that makes a lot of sense, but the real opportunity is allowing people to take the $1,400 they're spending, or $2,000 they're spending on rent every month, and instead put that into, into the equity in their own home. And that's really exciting.
So maybe there's opportunities for other partners in this, too. I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, I mean, if there's a housing trust fund, who else would want to, who else could or could justify putting money in it, too? And this is what, you know, and compare notes with the Ben Chambers efforts, you know, they're setting, and CORE, they're both setting up a scenario where, hey, if, if the employer puts money in, we can, we can help do this, and maybe there's opportunities there, too, so we should all compare notes. So it looks like there's general support for an idea, and let's take it a little farther. You know, so as I say, for me specifically, what does a housing trust fund looks like? Is that a, you know, an FTE at the county, or is it an independent entity, or is it a, just a bank account somewhere, you know? So this could be interesting to learn more about it.
Or, you know, there are, there are organizations that work in this space. They maintain deed restrictions, they, they determine people's eligibility, they run, you know, application processes for people that, you know, we could partner with someone who already does that.
I mean, housing works in Salgs, they already deal with Fed, so maybe there's a way to plug it in. So there's a lot of questions here.
Or Oracle, or Habitat, or somebody else, yeah.
So just in a consensus, proceed with...
Yeah, I'd say proceed, and, you know, I'm, now I'm looking at how much time we had allocated for this item.
Oh, I know, we're done today.
So I think we, yeah, we should...
I apologize on the schedule.
We should come back and do a much, much, some more, much more in-depth workshopping. But, yeah, maybe, maybe that was enough for today.
No, thank you so much, Sherri.
There we go.
And hopefully, Deb will be able to be here the next time, too, because she's, I know, right on the top of this with Payton Homes, Polish, and other members of our community that want to participate, so.
Well, I think it's really important to keep it focused and make sure we can have as much impact as we can in one area, because the area is vast. And so let me know how you want to proceed and what you need from me to continue the conversation, because it's awesome that you're all in agreement, but I want to make sure that we keep going.
A starting point, exactly.
Yeah, and this is, this is, you know, this is conceptual agreement. When it comes time to, to choose what TRT we're going to put where, it's, you know, I'm committed, but this is going to be tough.
Thank you.
Well, I would love to get that state funding, so we really need to work on that. If we could, you know, actually do more than 66. I think it's, there's definitely the need out there.
Well, we got to have a starting point, so hopefully you all are willing to be that starting point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
So as I say, I apologize the schedule, we do have feasibility study proposals at 1:00 today. We might be moving items 15 and 16 either to the end of the day, or maybe, I don't even know if we'll get to them if it really gets bad here. But item number 12, consideration order to extend open record period for Thornburg Resort.
It's also possible these three items will move...
Yeah, maybe they're just going to click along, because it hasn't gone yet.
Good morning, almost afternoon, commissioners. For the record, my name's Caroline House, and I'm a senior planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. And I'm here just as a follow-up from the public hearing that was held on February 1st for the Thornburg Bonification Request, to provide updates on the number of open record period extension requests that we've received, and ask you whether or not you want to grant an extension of the open record period that was set at that hearing on the 1st. So I believe you may have received some of them, but we received four requests in total. The first was a joint letter from the applicant, the Thornburg Destination Resort, and the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs, requesting 14 days be added to the new evidence and testimony period. And in that letter, the applicant agreed to extend the clock, the 150-day clock, for 14 days. And then the rebuttal and final legal argument periods would remain the same, so seven days for each of those. And then we received an additional request from Ms. Gould, or Jennifer Breakard, who's representing Ms. Gould, and she requested that the new evidence and testimony period be extended for 46 additional days, to provide a total of 60 days, as was originally requested by the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. And I'll note that Central Oregon Land Watch appeared to support Breakard's request for that extension as well. And then there was another party who just submitted a general extension request but didn't provide any details on the length of time, but just requesting additional time to respond. to respond.
So I, I don't know that I've been in this scenario as much before, so is this just a decision of the Board of Commissioners with input and knowing that we had the public hearing and as we were finishing up, there was asks and we set this period? So it's just a decision amongst the three of us of what we feel is appropriate?
Correct, so this is, I think, a new process. I don't know if we've done it for the board before, we've done it as part of a hearings officer hearing proceeding, but, um, the idea here is that there's an order that's been drafted and to the extent that you did want to extend the record to allow for additional evidence, um, it would be a decision, decision that's entirely up to the board. Um, and, you know, keeping in mind the 150-day clock is one of the things that would be a consideration if we're going to meet that statutory requirement.
Great. So any thoughts?
Um, I, coming out of the, coming out of the hearing, I, it was very important to me to provide the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs with the, the opportunity to meaningfully absorb the information in that Fish and Wildlife, uh, proposed Fish and Wildlife Management Plan and, and respond to it. So if they are coming forward and with Thornburg and saying 14 days is enough, um, I, I think I would, I would probably support that.
And I'll support that off also with that email that we did receive, um, in the morning.
Well, and I do too, I mean, because it is the applicant and Warm Springs involved. So, uh, let's conclude that adding those 14 days would be the decision of the board. So there's the order.
So I'll update the order and give it to Brenda for signature and then tomorrow we'll mail out a notice to all the parties and I'll update the website.
Do we have to make a motion on it?
I would recommend making a motion as well, but we, um, as part of the order, we have to establish the date, so.
Right, and they're all blank.
Yeah, so I want to go ahead and state those, I have them written out here.
Okay, so yeah, you go ahead and beat it out, yep.
The new evidence and testimony period would end now on Wednesday, March 1st, 2020, 2023. The rebuttal period would end on Wednesday, March 8th, 2020, 23. And the applicant's final legal argument would end on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023. And so that will be written in to reflect that and, sorry.
Can we vote on an order number today with this information?
It has an order number with it and then also the 50-day clock would be extended by, is that 14 days?
Correct.
14 days, okay. So that's section four, that's the only other thing you need to fill in.
Correct.
So I can make, make a motion then that we would, um, approve order number extending the post-hearing open record period for appeals number 247-22-000984-A and 247-23-000003-A. Order number 2023-008 per dates that Caroline just gave us.
Second.
Very complete. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, public hearing on 2023 housekeeping amendments to Deschutes County Code.
For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with CDD. If I could be upgraded to a panelist here so I can run my presentation.
So I'll do this introductory statement on this top of this thing, it says CDC staff, but this is the time and place for a hearing on file number 247-22-922-T-A concerning proposed amendments to Deschutes County Code and the Comprehensive Plan to Correct Minor Errors Identified by Staff and Other County Departments and the Public. The proposed amendments also incorporate updates from rulemaking for the state level, or at the state level through amendments to Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rule. Do you want to take it from there?
Sure, yeah. Um, the Board of County Commissioners today will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. Please note that the hearing is also being recorded. Uh, note that the Board may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. Uh, if you look, um, presentation right here should be shared screen, if we want to transition to that, you can see a website where you can see the full record materials that have been submitted as a part of this process. Please note that the hearing will be conducted in the following order.
The presentation is the next one.
Or the earlier one.
No, we're coming to that next.
No, the one we want is the earlier one.
Yep, yep.
Number 13.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, there it is, okay. Uh, yeah, you can see web address here for the full materials that have been submitted as a part of this, uh, process thus far. Um, please note that the hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff is the applicant representing the county will give a report on this issue. We will then open the hearing to all present and ask people to present testimony at one of the tables or at the podium. And you can also provide the Board with a copy of any written testimony that you may have. Please note that this is a hybrid hearing and if you're participating in person, please fill out a blue sign-up sheet over at the corner of the room here and submit it to the Board Secretary at the side of the room. You will then be called to the table to provide testimony. For any remote participants, I'll get to how you can provide testimony in a second here. And please note that at a work session on Monday, the Board recommended a three-minute limit for testimony for all parties participating here today. For any remote, uh, participants, uh, joining us via Zoom, please note that if you'd like to provide testimony, you can do so by selecting the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen or by dialing star nine if you're participating via phone. Please note that any questions to and from the Chair may be entertained at any time at the Chair's discretion, but cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the Chair after being recognized. The Chair is free to decide whether and/or not to ask such questions to the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any Commissioner for a conflict of interest. This challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. And should any Commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide this issue. At this time, any members of the Board need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose and if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed?
I have nothing to disclose and I can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose and I can proceed.
And I have nothing to disclose and we can proceed. So this is kind of our full disclosure package, but this is very much a legislative amendments and, uh, yeah.
Correct.
Let's proceed, yep.
Awesome, so I'll jump, jump straight into it here. So some background, as we've kind of gone over before, this is a set of our semi-annual housekeeping amendments and their primary purpose is just to correct errors that have been identified in the Deschutes County Code or portions of the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, those are errors identified by staff or members of the public. It reinstates omissions, things that may have been unintentionally left out in previous rounds of legislative amendments, or it reflects any updates or changes to state and federal law that have to be incorporated into our local code. The impact, uh, they're very minor changes to permitted uses or use standards in certain areas that are in alignment with state statutes, but no state statutes or administrative rules or land use goals apply to those specific changes again because they are very minor in nature or they're intended to just align with allowed uses in state law. So on the screen here, you can see all of the proposed chapters of the Deschutes County Code and one section of the Comprehensive Plan that are being affected by all these. I'm not going to, go into nitty-gritty detail, but I will step through each of these proposed amendments one by one for members of the public that are listening in. The first round of amendments are what I'll describe as process errors. Uh, this is related to Title 17 of the Deschutes County Code and it specifically clarifies that a signature line on all final plats for subdivisions or partitions have to include an area for the Deschutes County Environmental Soils Division as part of that signature process for finalizing final plats for subdivision. Previously, it stated that the county environmental health director should be that signatory on these final plats, but that hasn't been the process in place for many years at the county level. It's just always been Deschutes County Environmental Soils Director. And primarily what they're reviewing here is that the, the land that's being proposed for division actually has gone through a process to acknowledge they can place sanitary waste disposal systems on-site or that they can connect to a sewer district of some kind. The next big set of amendments I'll talk about are general amendment errors. These are things that were removed or left out of previous, uh, rounds of housekeeping amendments. In particular, this deals with 181, 1816 of the Deschutes County Code, this is in our exclusive farm use zone. And a previous round of amendments removed language related to what we describe as our solar setback language or our setbacks from the north property line. We have a particular set of conditions throughout the Deschutes County Code that requires developments to acknowledge a certain amount of, uh, solar access for properties to the north of them. So you want sun to shine on your house during the winter months in order to reduce heating costs primarily. Uh, this was accidentally removed from the portion of code dealing with exclusive farm use zones and this is just reinstating, uh, that previous language. Next set of amendments I'll talk about are definitional errors. Um, Deschutes County over many, many years had incorporated a series of definitions related to landfill sites, land disposal sites, waste recovery sites, et cetera. Um, and these did not have any alignment with state statutes or state definitions. Um, these were just kind of catch-all definitions that ultimately referred to the same uses, but they, language changed over time and our local code never caught up to those. About three years ago, we actually went through a previous set of amendments that corrected some of these to align with the state definition for land disposal sites, which is the current state usage of the term. Uh, but it didn't go through the entirety of our code and make those changes where all these references allowed. And so this is a secondary effort to correct all references to either landfills, land disposal sites, et cetera, and to the one unified term of land disposal sites. And feel free to interrupt me, of course, if you have any questions as I'm going through all this. Um, here's all the different code sections that some reference to, again, landfill, land disposal site, something similar, uh, were called out and corrected in this particular round of updates. You see it's quite a lot. Uh, the next set of amendments I'll, um, update you on are changes that occurred to state law. These are primarily related to temporary RV residences. So in 2021, uh, House Bill 2809 was passed and the corresponding state statutes and it specifically notes that no state or local governments can prohibit disallowing recreational vehicles for temporary residences on properties that are damaged by natural disasters of some kind. So if the governor of Oregon declares a natural disaster in an area, you might remember the 2020 Labor Day fires in particular is probably a good recent example. Once that natural disaster has been declared in an area, this sets out a period of time for members of the community that are recovering from that to live in an RV while they're rebuilding their, their primary residence on a particular piece of property. It does have a time limit associated with it, it's about two years at the, the kind of maximum that someone could live in an RV while they're rebuilding their, their residence. Uh, but ultimately this says that we can't disallow someone from, uh, establishing that particular use. The other big thing is, over time, our local code had gotten out of alignment with state law regarding recreational vehicles as temporary residences that are placed within flood hazard areas, specifically the language of the National Flood Insurance Rate Program and our state statutes that correspond with what, uh, particular measures property owners have to take when they establish RV residences in these areas. And so this just updates our local code to reflect those modern standards from the National Flood Insurance Program. Next update to state law regarding verifying legal lots of records, this is in Title 22 of our local code. Uh, also in 2021, House Bill 2884 was passed. And without going too far into the weeds here, uh, legal lots of record, as the Board may be aware, specifically refers to how properties were created, ideally looking that they were created through a lawful process at the time that they were established. But occasionally there are properties, generally historic properties you're talking about, things created in the 50s, 60s, maybe even early 70s, uh, that may have not gone through a formal process to establish their own unique boundaries of a parcel. They may have gone through a land division that was just a deed transfer to another property owner, something like that. And occasionally properties are not found to be legal lots of record. And that has bearing because until they can validate that particular piece of property, they may not be able to receive development permits of any type, uh, on-site. It's a fairly rare occurrence, but it does, does come up occasionally. But for properties that have previous development on-site, even if they are not a legal lot of record, there is a validation process that allows them to correct that. Uh, previously, uh, property owners only had 90 days to complete the entire validation process, which was quite cumbersome. You had to hire a surveyor to prepare a final plat in the same way that you would for any partition or land division. And people were ultimately getting bunched up and trying to finish this process by the time we discovered they have, maybe weren't a legally, legal lot of record. Uh, obviously caused a lot of consternation. We had sort of a built-in staff way of dealing with this where we would hold off on issuing any type of land use decisions while everything moved forward. But obviously the state understood that this was a problem more generally statewide and so they extended that 90-day validation period to a full year for validation. So this just captures that updated process in our local code. Uh, last set of amendments I'm going to talk about are our cultural and historic resources that are identified, um, in Chapter 5 of our Comprehensive Plan. It's been brought to staff's attention by a member of the public that one of our identified Goal 5 resources, the Lynch and Roberts Store advertisement, was incorrectly identified on a tax lot it does not occur on. And so this just changes it to the correct property designation. So that's the full scope of the amendments, but now I'll go through some of the agency and public comments. Uh, we did receive some feedback from DLCD staff regarding changes to the temporary RV residence provisions in floodplain areas. And as I've pointed out, uh, previously, when referencing the amendments, we've incorporated those comments and updated our local code to, to account for those changes. Next set of agency comments, we did have a request from the Deschutes County Building Official to prohibit permanent additions, things like cabanas and ramadas to temporary use structures like RV residences or manufactured homes, uh, things like medical hardship dwellings that are ultimately intended to be moved off of properties at a certain period of time. That specific request was made as the Building Safety Division has run into issues in the past where permanent additions to any of these temporary use structures cause issues when they're required to be moved offsite. Our current amendments do limit, um, permanent additions to RV structures, that's been in place for, for quite a while, so that's in, in line with past practice, um, including any, any type of RV, uh, temporary residence put in place. However, additional limitations for manufactured homes probably constitute policy decisions for the Board to make here and they likely go beyond housekeeping amendments. Uh, we can certainly have discussions with the Building Safety Department if they'd like to bring forward a more formal legislative process to specifically deal with this issue, but we decided it was, uh, unwise to include it in a, a formal housekeeping package.
I've been involved with, uh, phone calls and conversations about that situation where, well, it's not a, not a permanent residence, well, I built a, a ramada which is a garage or a roof structure over a manufactured home, I think it was, not even an RV, but, uh, I agree that it would be a little bit more than a housekeeping, so if we want to keep track of that, let's propose it in a work plan if it's, you know, if it's something to act on.
Yeah, we've, we've started those conversations across the street. Last set of agency comments, uh, just in compliance with statewide planning Goal 12, which is the transportation system rule, basically, our, uh, Deschutes County Senior Transportation Planner reviewed all the proposed amendments for compliance with that rule and noted that they did comply with the TPR standards given there's no intended impacts or increased transportation impacts associated with any of these. Moving on to some of our public comments, uh, we received two comments from Diane Lizito and Nunzi Gould concerning the Lynch and Roberts Store advertisement, again, that Goal 5 cultural resource as being, uh, incorrectly identified on that tax lot. And as we pointed out, that, that correction and the Comprehensive Plan is a part of this legislative package. We did receive one additional public comment, um, after the, the completion of the Board's packet for today from Doreen Ty. It concerned items such as flight training, uh, air traffic impacts and potential wildlife impacts from the city of Ben's Municipal Airport. However, as I pointed out here, or should be obvious, that no portion of the proposed amendments here alter any allowed or prohibited uses at airport facilities anywhere in the amendments here alter any allowed or prohibited uses at airport facilities anywhere in the county. So while we've taken those comments into consideration, and they are included in, in the record associated with this, none of the proposed amendments right now are, are affecting airport facilities generally. The Planning Commission did review these at a previous public hearing on January twenty-six. There were no public comments submitted during that hearing, and ultimately, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this legislative package to the board. And with that, I'll move on to some next steps. The options to move forward for the board, you can either continue the hearing to a date and time certain. You can close the hearing today and leave the written record open for a period of time to a date certain. You can close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or you have the option of closing the hearing and commencing deliberations today. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions?
So was that Doreen Ty who said she wanted to give comment?
I believe so.
That'll be next up.
Okay, so that's after questions.
Yeah, just anything.
Right.
No questions?
She's still on, yes.
Okay, so yeah, this is the public hearing on the matter. Thank you very much for the introduction and overview of what's going on there. So is there anybody in the room asking to testify in this matter? Seeing none online. So yeah, we saw Ms. Ty, who had commented previously, say hi this morning and wanting to be on for this item. So it's glad that you're able to mention her topics that was, she had already put on the record, so that's good. Oh, she is available? Or somebody?
I have Doreen.
Okay, yep. So yeah, the raised hand feature for...
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Hi. Hi, I just wanted, so the reason I even put that in there is because I've seen some airport stuff go through that, yeah, didn't seem related to the topics. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in there. I'm sorry it was not related. So with that said, then this is an inappropriate place for me to be speaking. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for joining us, though, and thank you for following the meeting all morning. And yeah, it'll come around at some point. Ben Derport.
I mean, I do...
All right, thank you.
And CDD staff can correct me, but I do think that the kind of input that you were putting forward for this process, Doreen, would actually be appropriate to submit for the Comprehensive Plan amendment.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So any other requests? Seeing none online and nobody in the room, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Want to thank the Planning Commission for going through this process and also the community members' input on this. So at this time, as I say, public hearing is closed, and we can either, you know, leave a record open or work towards deliberations. Looks like it's pretty cut and dry from my point of view.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are housekeeping...
Very much.
I don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes, I, I don't believe we do. We seem to have them every year, though, don't we?
Typically, they're annually or semi-annually, yeah.
So at this time, yeah, it looks like there's consensus at this time to proceed with, an ordinance adopting them. Is that, are we prepared for that today, or is that...
You do have a draft ordinance in your packet here today, so you could move forward with...
I was looking at all the red line items. I didn't look at, for that. Is that in the...
It is updated too, per legal.
Correct, yes.
Here we go, okay.
So I'm, I'm going to make a motion, move approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero one on a non-emergency basis with corresponding exhibits.
It actually should just be, move the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move first reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero one.
By title only?
By title only. There we go.
We're going to get this down.
We could be here for the rest of the day.
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So at this time, first reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero one, an ordinance amending Title Seventeen subdivision and partition ordinance, Title Eighteen zoning ordinance, Title Twenty-two procedures ordinance for the Deschutes County Code, and Title Twenty-three Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to incorporate changes to state law and provide clarification of existing regulations, procedures, and policies. So a second reading in two weeks.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that wasn't so bad. Maybe we're catching up a little here. Item number fourteen, public hearing on amateur and ham radio facility amendments. Here we go, another whole procedure to get into this. I'll offer to start this again. So this is the time and place set for hearing on file number two-four-seven dash two-two-nine-one-two dash TA concerning tax amendments for Deschutes County Code, Title Eighteen-one-one-six dot two-nine-zero relating to amateur radio facilities.
Thank you. So the Board of County Commissioners will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. This hearing is also being recorded. All materials related to the record can be found at the website listed here, also on our website, deschutes.org/cd under BOCC hearings. The board may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff will give a report on this issue. We will then open the hearing to those who wish to provide testimony with a limit of three minutes per individual. Please be sure to state your first name, last name, and address for the record. You can also provide the commission with a copy of written testimony. This is a hybrid hearing. If you are participating in person, please fill out a blue sign-up sheet and submit it to the board secretary at the side of the room. You will then be called to the table to provide testimony by the chair. For remote participants, please indicate if you'd like to provide testimony by using the raise hand button in Zoom, or by dialing star nine if you're participating via phone. The chair will then call in participants with hands raised to provide their testimony. Questions to and from the chair may be entertained at any time at the chair's discretion. Cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the chair after being recognized. The chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any commissioner for conflict of interest. This challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. Should any commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide this issue. At this time, do any members of the commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest?
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose, and I can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose and can proceed.
I do have a ham radio license, and I might put up an antenna someday, but that's not a conflict of interest, so I have nothing to disclose and I can't proceed.
Excellent. Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner, the members, members of the hearing's body based on conflicts of interest?
As no challenges are present, the hearing is now open, and staff will proceed with a brief report.
Excellent. Thank you, commissioners, for the record, Nicole Mardell, senior planner, and for the sake of our time together, I will try to keep this very brief. So this proposal before you today is based on changes to our amateur radio facility code section in the Deschutes County Code. And in essence, staff is proposing to change our current process to add two different tiers of regulation based on height. So a streamlined process for facilities that are small scale or under seventy feet, and a more clear process for facilities between seventy feet to two hundred feet. And again, a cleanup of this code section generally for clarity. So a bit of background on this issue, Deschutes County began regulating amateur radio facilities in two thousand and eight. This was essentially resulting from a code enforcement case based on aesthetics. So during that time, the Board of County Commissioners added some requirements in our code to regulate those aesthetic-related items for amateur radio facilities. So things like setbacks, limiting signage and lighting, requiring proof of an FCC license, requiring written compliance from the Federal Aviation Administration, Federal Communications Commission, and Oregon Department of Aviation. And at that time, the board also chose to exempt these facilities from the underlying zoning district's height limit, which is typically thirty feet. So at this time, unless you're in an airport safety or landscape management zone where there need to be some additional height limitations due to, you know, impacts to aircrafts, impacts to scenic views, there currently is no height limit. So this item became, came before the board during our two thousand and twenty-one work plan development process. So this is a board-directed item for us to revisit this section of code. During that work plan process, we heard from an individual, Tony Partain, who I believe is here in the room today, who had recently gone through this process and ran into some issues specifically with receiving responses from those federal and state agencies. So in talking with the ham radio community, Oregon Department of Aviation, and the Building Division, we found that there is a desire and an opportunity to streamline review of these smaller-scale facilities, those under seventy feet, as those are typically the most common proposed by ham radio operators for their operations. In addition to that, there's also a specific ORS that limits a local government's ability to regulate these facilities if they're under seventy feet, unless it's directly tied to an aesthetic, health, or safety purpose. So we found that seventy feet as sort of the magic number in this process. So with that, as I mentioned, really, we're adding a cleanup of, of our code, so adding that cross-reference to our height limit in our airport landscape management zones, adding the two tiers of regulations based on height. So for facilities that are under seventy feet, we'd allow them outright as a permitted accessory use. We would remove the requirement for a formal determination of written compliance from the state and federal agencies that I mentioned. Of course, we encourage coordination, but typically, because they're outside of their purview, because they are so small, they usually aren't able to provide a written letter because they typically don't review them. And we're also proposing to maintain our aesthetic requirements and the requirement for the operator's license.
Well, and I'll acknowledge that I think that formal letter from the FAA was the catch twenty-two, and we may be able to hear about that, because our code said, go get the letter. And FAA is like, we don't care about this, so they weren't going to provide a letter. So I think that's what, you know, got me engaged, thinking, oh, we got to look at this.
Correct, yes, thank you. So for the facilities that are a little bit larger scale, so those between seventy to two hundred feet, we would explicitly require land use review in our code, just due to their larger scale and size. In that case, we would keep in the requirement for coordination with the federal and state agencies, because at this height, they do typically have some additional criteria. We would maintain our aesthetic requirements currently in the code and maintain the requirement for the operator's license. So the Planning Commission did review this item. At the Planning Commission public hearing, we heard two comments. So the first was general support for the amendments and some questions about that interaction with the airport and landscape management zones. And the second was a concern about the building permit review process and the impacts to view sheds from these facilities. So staff in reviewing our proposed amendments found that our impacts to inventoried scenic corridors, that is essentially covered by these amendments, since we do have the height limit in the landscape management zone. If a building permit is required, there are some additional requirements in terms of screening. So we do feel that in our scenic inventory corridors, that item is covered. But unfortunately, for larger view sheds, we currently don't have any regulations for view sheds generally in the county. The Planning Commission, following the public hearing, did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments. And I also wanted to discuss some questions that came up during Monday's work session. So there's a great, great question about the height of a wireless telecommunications facility that was recently approved. So I wanted to note that in Deschutes County, we currently regulate cell phone towers or wireless facilities in two different ways. If they're located in an exclusive farm use zone, the height maximum is two hundred feet, and that comes specifically from a statute requirement for that exclusive farm use zone. So the county doesn't have the ability, as it's a protected use, to further limit that height. If a wireless communication facility is outside of the EFU zone, in all other zones, we have a maximum height limit of a hundred and fifty feet. So how that relates to our amateur radio facilities, there are no statutory requirements for amateur radio. So staff, when we were originally drafting the proposal, essentially went for the most streamlined, most maximum potential in terms of height. So we originally selected two hundred feet in line with our wireless facility and EFU kind of requirement. And additionally, two hundred feet is sort of the bar where, once you go beyond that, there are quite a few additional FAA requirements, quite a few additional permitting requirements. So we felt that that was a good threshold to set. That being said, the board has the option today, if you were to desire to limit that maximum height to a hundred and fifty feet, more in line with wireless facilities and all of our other zones, that is an option that you have. And I also wanted to note, I reached out to Tony Partain, who's really been our conduit to the ham radio community during this process, and he noted he didn't have any specific concerns about this lowering of height. He felt it was reasonable. Typically, it'd be unusual for someone to propose a tower beyond seventy feet, but in particular, if you're getting up to a hundred and fifty, two hundred, it's very cost prohibitive. So we likely wouldn't see towers above a hundred and fifty feet anyway. So with that, let's see, there was another item that came up at the work session. My appreciation to our legal counsel helped me clean up just an additional section of our code relating to, again, that cross-reference to the airport safety and landscape management zones. So you'll see before you, I handed out the most recent language based on that discussion, which is slightly different than what's on your packet today, but getting at the same item, just a little bit more of a clearer reference to that, that section of code. So with that, the board has some options to move forward. Today, you could choose to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain, close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. And with that, thank you. I welcome any questions.
Thank you. So for this page you handed out, I'm seeing item C talks about up to two hundred feet maximum height, over seventy feet up to two hundred. So that would be the specific location for changing it to one fifty?
Yes, I believe so.
And then what other changes are on this page that you handed in?
It's this one, number five.
Exactly, yeah, so it's...
Got it, okay.
Yep.
So this item number five is for... Okay, good, thank you.
Is that what you said?
Yes, exactly.
Can we get a sense from, you know, people who do ham radio stuff, like, how often do, do you even get a, a tower that goes up to seventy feet?
Sure, I think that's a, a great item. I believe we do have a member of the public who wishes to testify, so I'll ask that...
I'll ask him that quick.
Perhaps he provides that.
Yeah, okay, so any other thoughts before? So this is the public hearing on the matter. Please join us in testimony if you're available. Yep. And anybody else on this matter also?
Hi, my name is Tony Partain, P-A-R-T-A-I-N, address is six zero six one zero, Drover Way, Bend, Oregon, nine seven seven zero two. And to address the seventy-foot mark, the odds of a tower that are going to be higher than seventy feet are very low. They've become very cost prohibitive. Their, their cost goes up exponentially in height. A fifty-five or sixty-foot tower will cost you somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand. And a hundred-foot tower, you're talking a hundred and a quarter to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the odds of that happening here are going to be very rare. There's, I only know of a handful of stations throughout the country that exceed a hundred feet. So it's going to be a very limited, very limited situation or scenario.
Do you have a sense of how many even, how many even in that fifty to fifty-five foot range do we have in Deschutes County, or do you think we might have?
I don't know exactly, but I know of, personally, I know of probably twenty of them.
Okay.
Yeah. And Deschutes County has about a thousand amateur radio operators and two active radio clubs here, too.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering whether, at seventy, that was even, you know, trying to account for something that would happen very, very rarely, but if there's, if there's already twenty in the fifty to fifty-five foot range, then that, that's a thing.
Yeah, the seventy-foot, it's a matter of physics. The antennas work at a specific height for each frequency, and to get into that, those lower frequencies in that extended height, it gets very, very expensive. So, and that's, I guess, the other reason, too, that the Oregon statutes don't require a permit for seventy feet and under. So it's pretty, pretty typical, you're going to stay in that fifty to, thirty-five to fifty to sixty feet are going... going to be your typical ones. When you get to 70 feet, it starts, like I said, it starts getting expensive.
I mean, 15,000 to 20,000 sounds pretty expensive to me, but, already, but-
Yeah. And I would like to thank the board and everybody who worked on this, who spent the time. We appreciate your, your, your time and effort. On behalf of the Central Oregon DX Club, the High Desert Amateur Radio Group, and all the hams in Central Oregon, we thank, we thank you for your help on this.
Pretty exciting. Thank you very much for your testimony today. Thanks, thank you.
Thanks for being a resource for our community development department as they, as they were developing this.
Is there anybody else to testify in this matter online? No, anybody else in the room? So I'll acknowledge that, yeah, so I don't, I don't have an external antenna. It's just a HT, they call it, a handheld device. So it's just a little whip antenna so far. But from my experience, you know, 20, 30, 40 feet off the edge of a shop or maybe in your yard is the starting point. So then it just gets a little bit more serious for some ham operators to, to get that, you know, that, that tri, tri pole, whatever the terminology is, tower set up, and that's a little level. But, yeah, 70 feet, sounds like everybody's pretty comfortable with. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing on the matter, and we can work towards deliberations or keeping the record open. And we're kind of in the same spot as earlier, possibly.
I see no need to keep the record open.
Neither do I.
Okay, so record will be closed, deliberations can commence, or for a different day, but, so the other item is just that 150 item, 150 feet opposed to 200 feet. And we know that, yeah, that's, that's a whole new realm when it gets up to that high. Are we comfortable or motivated to put 150 in there instead of 200? Yeah, I mean, I, I could go either way from my point of view. You know, once you get to that height, probably looking at permits and structural rigidity and conditional use possibly, depending on the, the location, so.
Bless you.
Thank you. I mean, so this says over 70, under 200, subject to requirements under subsection A and C1, 2, and any conditions of land use. So we're already talking about a conditional land use. And I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So just leaving it at 200, or? So as I say, that was the one option. We talked about, you know, the max height-
Right.
Relative to-
That was my question.
Well, I mean, if it's cost prohibitive to go above 150 anyway, then we could just bring that down to 100. Either way.
Commissioner Dyer?
I'm fine with leaving it.
At 200?
Yes.
So we'll leave it at 200. As I say, probability of that happening is very minimal. It'd be interesting if it did. But then it'll get to lower frequencies, we heard just now. So at this time, looks like there's going to be support for the package as presented. And if we're ready, is there an ordinance?
I'll move first reading of ordinance 2023-004.
I'll second it.
By title only?
By title only.
And you second that?
Yes, by title.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So this is first ordnance, first reading of ordinance number 2023-004, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Chapter 18 dot 116 dot 290 to streamline establishment of amateur radio facilities. Second reading within two weeks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Nicole.
Nice to see you.
So either we can power through the last two items here real quick or take a break to 1 o'clock.
This was the day I chose not to have breakfast. That was smart.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's do these afterwards or, or another time then. That answers that question right there. So we're gonna, items 15 and 16, either at the end of today or another meeting, we're going to reconvene at 1 o'clock, and upstairs is the proposal. So we have a video meeting.
So we can do, we can do 15 and 16 on another day then?
Unless that's going to be technically a challenge.
I'm sure it's doable. We might have some pickups in how today's meeting video is captured. It might be-
Oh, if we switch gears?
It's a little bit.
Okay. So let's not do that then. Yeah. So we'll be back here at 1 o'clock.
Okay. Item 16, it's, Tanya, the application, the grant application is due at the end of next week, so she, she could come back on the 22nd, but there's not a lot of time-
Oh, come, let's get it done real quick. Come on, let's go. Number 16.
We can do it this afternoon, she said also.
Okay, this afternoon then.
So we can, we can reconvene this afternoon. Is that, that's all right?
So we're coming back here.
Yes, we'll be in this room after 1 o'clock. We're-
Yeah, we'll come back.
We're lunch, back from our lunch recess as Board of Commissioners, Deschutes County, February 15th, 1 o'clock or 1:05. And the next item is camping feasibility study proposal discussions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Jen Patterson, Strategic Initiatives Manager for the county. This afternoon, we have three consultants who have been invited to present their proposals for the camping feasibility RFP. The consultants have been notified that the study has been narrowed to three county properties, Thompson Road, Draft Rowan Le Pine, and Crooked River Ranch. I did print out the maps for that, so I'll distribute that in just a second, so you just have those in front of you. The consultants have each been asked to present, excuse me, to prepare a 15 to 20-minute presentation for you and then be available for a 20 to 25-minute question and answer period with you. If there are no questions, I'll go ahead and pass out the map, and I'll turn it over to introduce Mark Buckley. He's with Echo Northwest, who will give the first presentation. And Mark, if you could please just state your name and organization for the record?
Yes, thank you. My name is Mark Buckley with Echo Northwest. And thank you, Commissioner Devon, Commissioner Chang, Commissioner Dyer. And I do have one colleague from our partner organization ESA who will be on, on Zoom presenting as well. But I'll, I'll just jump right in because I know, I know the schedule is tight. First of all, thank you for inviting me here to speak. I'm excited about this. Personally, I live less than a mile away. I have a family. We try to camp around here all the time ourselves, and this is a great effort. And I'd like to say that it's, it's very consistent with the work that my team at Echo Northwest and ESA have been working on for quite some time. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a little bit. So just a little intro to our team. I would be providing lead. Echo Northwest, we're, oh, there we go. We're a, a large, one of the largest economics and finance advisory firms in the Northwest and across the West. I lead our natural resource group. Most of my work involves natural resource benefit cost, economic analysis, financial analysis. I do quite a bit of work for the Forest Service nationally, but certainly here in central Oregon, for Deschutes National Forest. Done quite a bit of work for the city. My colleagues have done quite a bit of work for the county. I also serve on advisory committees for the city of Bend in terms of their environment committee and their utility advisory committee, both of which I think have an important nexus here. And I, I serve on the advisory committee for Oregon Parks, OPRD's statewide comprehensive outdoor plan. So this is, this is a great project in terms of a theme and a need that we've seen across the state, and certainly here in central Oregon is probably at its, at its height. My colleague from ESA, Matthew Crampton, I'll let him introduce himself in a, in a moment, but they provide the technical spatial analysis component, and we work with them all the time. We actually share office space here in Bend, so we have a very seamless relationship, and they've been involved in numerous projects of this sort, including recreation-based in Deschutes County. Also say that we have a whole backlog of expertise on both of our teams that are available to support this type of work as the various questions come up. Bob Parker, who has worked for the county in many aspects. Also, if equity becomes an issue, as it increasingly does, one of my colleagues, Dr. Jade Aguilar, who actually lives here in Bend now as well, is available. I know that she has been part of a team proposing to the county for an equity plan that's coming up. And ESA similarly has a whole range of capacity here in central Oregon, as well as elsewhere in the state that can help us with the technical pieces as they come about. So let me just, I think we might have lost the slides. Oh, there we go. So again, just sort of high level on some of our firm-level calls. We would be playing the role of the lead based on the way we see these questions playing out. But this is something that we see evolving over the lifespan of the project, that this is a project that requires several phases, that there's a preliminary assessment that is largely driven by the supply, demand, and financial aspects, as well as feeding into some of the site-specific pieces that ESA will have. I've mentioned some of the representative examples. I, I know that we've done some projects recently that I think are a very nice fit for these same questions in other communities in Oregon. And this, as I've mentioned, is a theme that we're hearing across the state now. We've been approached by several groups, communities, Grants Pass, Cascade Locks, Travel Oregon, elsewhere. So this is a common question, and the data that support these kinds of questions are becoming more and more readily available. And I think there are some nice efficiencies we can bring to the county. I might turn it over to Matthew, if he's able to speak, to give a little bit of an overview of ESA for you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Hi, everybody. My name is Matthew Crampton, here representing Environmental Science Associates. We are a professional services consulting firm. We have lots, we offer lots of services that integrate environmental science and permitting, landscape architecture, water resources, and civil engineering, cultural resources, as well as geospatial services. We wear a lot of hats. For this project, our team will consist of myself. I'll be the principal landscape architect, and I'll be managing the ESA scope of services. I will be working closely with Susan Cunningham. Susan's a senior-level biologist with, and also a resident in Bend. She has specialized experience in regulatory compliance and environmental documentation for projects that have complex natural resource issues. And in this project, she's going to serve as the link between kind of our, our planning and analysis efforts and the regulatory compliance requirements that we will be considering. We'll also be supported by Steve Rollup in our office, a senior landscape architect with broad experience in park and recreation planning, as well as Thomas Fisher, an environmental designer with a lot of experience in suitability, analysis, design, and construction. He'll be serving as technical support on this project. ESA has a lot of experience in site design and open space planning, and we really kind of try to advance our, our understanding of balancing site usage with ecological protection and enhancement. And we're going to try to highlight that on this project if we are selected to, to work with you all. We also have experienced navigation, navigating federal, state, and local laws, policies, and regulations. My colleague Susan is going to be instrumental in that regard. We work across central Oregon, and we have a lot of experience working in Deschutes County as well. Shown here is just a couple, a list of a couple of projects that we've successfully completed. Elping Glow, Riley Ranch, and some work in Chevelin Park. These are all belated spaces. We're currently doing ongoing work with the city of Redmond, and some really exciting work for the Deschutes River Access with BPRD. Back to you, Mark.
Great, thanks, Matthew. So, you know, I think the project understanding is, is one of the critical pieces of this that we see, that we want to work with the county, with the commissioners, as well as county staff and stakeholders, to make sure we know exactly what we're trying to achieve here. And that's really fundamental to the multi-phase approach that we've proposed. This is an area with high use, growing visitation, growing population, but several social challenges as well, with houseless populations and other issues at stake. And we, we recognize that this is one potential piece of a larger strategy that fits into a variety of recreational and potentially financial questions. Again, our, our team has done all of this type of work in several settings. Every project is different, every context is, is distinct. I like to think that I have a good understanding, having lived here for over a decade and spent quite a bit more time than that as well, dealing with these kinds of questions and challenges. So I won't, I won't restate the project problems and issues, but I think we all agree that it's, oh, sorry.
It's getting hot today.
That it's, that it, this is potentially a more complicated and nuanced set of issues than just an RV camp on its own. And that, that really leads to the kind of approach that we propose. Really, we do expect to work closely with the county to tailor something specific to the needs. And, and the first phase is really a listening phase and an organizational phase to understand exactly what the goals and objectives are going to be and how we're going to organize them. Because there are a range of trade-offs depending on how, what direction we go, and any particular set of criteria might lead to any one of your candidate sites as the optimal site. So getting a good understanding of the needs is our first step. Then there's a, an important quantitative step, spatial analysis phase, sort of our initial review. Again, I'd say fortunately, because we've done so much work in central Oregon already, that the supply, demand, market factors, willingness to pay, and even the, the market factors that will influence the cost of operation, the prices you're willing to, you're able to charge, the, the labor staffing issues, the county versus private management issues, these are all questions that we've dealt with in this area and across the state, and I feel like we're pretty comfortable with that. I'm not going to go into restating what you have in the RFP. I'd say that we comfortably feel capable of addressing any of those and happy to go into detail. We do know that there are some potential specific questions, say with title issues and the like, where we might bring in some other expertise or contract out a little bit of specific services where it's more cost-effective and, and efficient. And we can, we can utilize other local services where, where it makes sense. And then the second phase is where we can really start to dig in deeper. I think the evolution of this project, from my understanding, where we're starting to narrow down the sites, but still consider some of the more complex interaction opportunities with the Forest Service or BLM, or even the city of Bend, as it is potentially involved in a land swap up near Phil's Trail for the water treatment facilities, that there are some more complex questions that we will want to make sure we fine-tune our approach and objectives before we dig into those. And the, the final products of this work are a key piece of this process, so that we are setting the county up to smoothly move into next steps and, and potentially be partners in that. I think having a firm like ESA involved that has worked with these kinds of projects right through to implementation is a, is a key opportunity for the county to, to have a smooth process from now until one of these campgrounds or more might, might come to fruition. So let me just get a little bit. Just want to touch a few of the key themes here. As I've mentioned a few times, we've been doing quite a bit of work in the region using the whole range of publicly available data, as well as emerging data sources around understanding where people spend their time. Been involved with the Forest Service and its latest visitor use monitoring exercise that's underway currently. And there is a statewide survey underway currently for the latest. These are some of the preliminary data that I, some of it's available in reports that we've shared before, some is in ongoing work. But I'll say that we're trying to do a better job of understanding where people are spending their time. And this is just the recreational piece. We recognize that some of the sites might want to satisfy a different set of visitor profiles. And so we anticipate creating a set of profiles and an understanding of what those trips look like, what those uses look like, where they're coming from, where they're trying to go. And that factors into the level of demand, seasonality, and how we're going to compare these different sites. Again, happy to go into a lot of more detail here, but I'll try to keep it brief for now. I'm going to turn it over to Matthew to speak a little bit about the site assessment process now.
Yeah, the, the analysis phase of this project is going to be a lot of fun. This is the phase of the project where we get to learn a lot about a new location, envision opportunity, as well as exciting user experiences. So for the analysis portion of this scope, we like to start by zooming out to understand the context of the study areas, much, much like Mark was just talking about. And with a lot of experience working in central Oregon, our team is no stranger to the beauty of Deschutes County and the many outdoor amenities that draw people to visit, vacation, and also relocate to Deschutes County. So our team will develop an understanding for the types of users that may frequent a new campground, and will draw on our experience in recreation planning to anticipate visitor needs, as well as- needs, as well as identify potential shortfalls that the study areas may exhibit. Next slide, please. The three sites currently selected for evaluation do present some very different characteristics. They vary with regards to how developed their setting is, what access looks like, as well as who the neighbors are. Each site presents differences in access to nearby amenities, public open space, as well as nearby services that might work together and support a new camping facility. The physical characteristics vary pretty widely in terms of the size of the study area, the complexity of the terrain, and the type and density of existing vegetation on the site. So, our team will begin with this type of evaluation at each site in an effort to identify appropriate evaluation criteria for the study areas. We'll also rely on a boots-on-the-ground approach where we'll be evaluating a unique user experience potential available at each site. Next slide, please. Our team has the goal of developing evaluation criteria that will translate to concise development strengths, as well as constraint considerations for each of these sites that we're evaluating. We'll be working closely, hopefully closely, with the county to ensure that we're focusing on an evaluation that will best set the stage for subsequent phases of work. In addition to the physical, social, and experiential considerations that I just outlined, our team will layer in considerations for zoning, any comprehensive planning that may impact the study areas, regulations that may, that have to be considered for development, as well as potential impacts on the environment that development might incur. We will, will be evaluating infrastructure needs, availability, as we consider the demands for a new facility, and start to layer that into an evaluation of potential cost for proposed development. Next slide, please. Now, as we work towards the production of an executive summary of this, of this process, we're going to be assembling a site analysis, we will be assembling the analysis into a master suitability plan, really, for each of the study areas, much like what you see here. And these, these plans are able to serve as a key resource, enabling side-by-side evaluation of the study areas and their associated opportunities and constraints. And we have to create a tool that will be useful for decision-making, and importantly, we hope that it will also start to structure subsequent phases of study or design, if it's deemed appropriate, at these sites. Back to you, Mark.
Thanks. I did want to also speak a little bit. We recognize that there's been a streamlining of this process, and again, we want to work closely with the county if we're selected to tailor this process and project to fit the needs and the constraints. Right now, with the scaling down of the sites, we're expecting a cost reduction that leads our team's overall cost estimate to around $100,000, but we also expect that they're, depending on how some of these specific elements evolve, that could change a little bit. I will say that I do like working in a phased approach, so that we can be careful and efficient and only proceed when we're ready and we know how to, how to use those resources as wisely as we can. I know there's also a question at stake in terms of how some of the interaction with the other potential landowners or managers would play out, and again, I think we bring a lot to that table because we work directly with all of those organizations, those governments that are, that we're discussing on these very issues in terms of recreation investment. We are starting up a new phase of work with the Forest Service, for example, to increase investment in campgrounds on the Cascade Lakes Highway, but also recognizing the need across the forest. So, I think there are some real efficiencies there. We do also, though, in our proposal, describe that process in sort of a formal, legal effort. Could you bring the slides back up? Sorry, I was going to, I was going to show, just to go to the last slide here, how our project timeline. This is still the timeline that we're expecting, assuming that we might be able to kick something off in March, that we would be able to move quite quickly and really try to get through the first phase in the next couple of months, but have those full financial analyses and site plans that Matthew was talking about by early fall. So, I think that's, that's still a feasible schedule. Again, we would want to tailor this to the process that the county needs, and those objectives and efforts with partner organizations might, might change this a bit, but right now, that's what we're seeing. So, with that, I think I might have gone a little longer than I intended, and I will stop and open for any questions. Thank you.
There was a portion of your presentation where you were talking about going through zoning and, and, you know, kind of the land use process, and we do have, you know, we have, we have a community development department, and I'm wondering to what extent you could just kind of have a, you know, like a designed two-hour sit-down with like a team from, from community development and get a bunch of the information that you need in an expedited way, as opposed to doing a whole lot of like book research and, and, you know, going through code and things like that, to streamline at least that portion of the project?
No, definitely, I agree, and I think it's always hard to know how much the staff for an organization, for a government, would be involved directly, and we always like it when we can be working as a team. That's certainly easier, and again, we don't want to reinvent anything. That, I think that's why a phased approach is so efficient, so we can sort of do that initial data review, which, if the county already has the data, that means we don't have to worry about it and do it ourselves. So, I think, yeah, definitely, we would want to take advantage of that, and that would be a reason to try to, try to set this up for an initial sort of team, including the county, exercise of identifying what, what are the data gaps and what, what data is sufficient?
Yeah, just because, I mean, ultimately, the consumer of this product is the county, and we would trust the opinions of our community development staff on you, like, oh, yeah, you are allowed to do this here, and it would have to be like, you would have to do it within these, these sideboards. So, you know, you could just take the information that they provide, rather than kind of giving us sort of really robust or, you know, kind of, rather than worrying about giving us shoddy information that would come back and bite us later, we're, I assume we'd be willing to take the risk that our own community development staff knows what they're talking about.
Yeah, I fully agree, and I think another example of that is if we're looking at what the cost of some of the options would be for operations, looking at what it actually costs the county to operate facilities now, and how the county staffs, and what are prevailing wages and those kinds of considerations, and looking at actual private concessions in the region, if that's a consideration that we want to use. So, as opposed to bringing canned values from elsewhere or the like. So, I'd always prefer to rely on county source data in this kind of exercise as much as we can.
Dr. Buckley, you listed the Barton Park in Clackamas County. You just did there with a master plan? That was it? I mean, what was, what do you think, if we called Clackamas, what would they tell us about the master plan? Did they go ahead and implement it, then?
Yeah, you know, I was, I was only lightly involved in that. I'd have to get more, more information, but I know from the piece that we did, and I have led a variety of projects for Clackamas County, it was an issue of congestion and public transit. It was a little bit similar to some of the tubing exercises here for Bend Parks and city of Bend, where it was looking at feasibility of shuttles and dealing with lack of parking and too much congestion on the road, and how to invest in those parks to deal with the increasing demand. So, I wouldn't know exactly what they would say, but I know the questions, and I'm sure we could get the plan for you and put you in contact if you'd like.
What's your favorite project that you, your team has done here in central Oregon?
Oh, well, you know, I think, I think this work that we're doing for the Forest Service is pretty cutting-edge. It's funded through their National Partnerships Office. We've received a national innovative financing, a national forest grant, and in the latest round of funding for it, they used our central Oregon project as the example of what the ideal project would look like. So, that one's been great, and they've been looking for opportunities to expand that exercise here. You know, it's sort of a side conversation. We're looking for local government partners for the next rounds of that federal grant opportunity, and I think, you know, that could be a nice funding source for some of this, this kind of research here locally. Not to go into that too far, but it is looking to expand the role of local communities in how the forests are managed, stewered, sort of funded, and ultimately, how the decisions are made for these forests, especially when you've got a close relationship between the community and a forest like we do here, sort of an important test case across the West.
Thank you.
The RFP talks about public or private RV parks, so I always want to keep that in mind, too, just from my point of view. It's like, man, if we can spin somebody off and have a successful operation, that'd be great. And, you know, these are county lands here, but this work could be done for possible other private parcels or efforts in the county, or even in the state. So, I think of it as that valuable. You know, what does it mean to have, you know, the next RV spots anywhere? You know, as I say, it's not the long-term housing, but it's just that shock absorber for people coming and going seasonally, tourism or construction, as well as recreation. So, I just want to, you know, I just want to keep it big here at this time, is what I'm thinking.
No, I think that's an important point, and I'll say that covers a lot of our work. I do a lot of work on water, including here in central Oregon as well, and when we look at the cost of projects for water supply, we're doing some work with North Unit Irrigation District right now, and with OWEB and OSU, where we are looking at options for public versus private ownership of various infrastructure, and realistically, the permitting, the planning process, the opportunities do vary whether you've got public or private ownership. So, there are always trade-offs, there are governance issues, and I think that's why getting those objectives identified upfront. You know, if this was an exercise purely designed to generate as much net revenue as possible for the county, we might have a very different objective, you know, very different recommendation or set of results than if, and it would influence this public versus private piece than if we're trying to, you know, provide the lowest-cost opportunities, or if it was primarily trying to address short-term housing needs, things like that. So, yeah, I think that's a key element and why the phased process is going to be important here.
Well, and either way, this is, from my point of view, this is a market-rate opportunity, you know, because, you know, we do have dispersed camping, homeless issues, but this isn't that. But if we had a market-rate place for somebody to go, there's an opportunity for somebody, too. So, we're not trying to solve other problems with this, either.
And they're all, obviously, are issues with the, for county in terms of FTE and sort of staffing issues, and I know at times that can be a challenge. When we work with other government agencies, there are those sort of broader constraints, we'll say, on the scale of operations that will dictate some of that internal or external management and maybe even ownership.
These, these sites, they really do present some pretty different opportunities. You know, when you look at the Fort Thompson property, I, you know, I, I went out there to take a peek with some people from the Central Oregon Trail Alliance, and that is within the county ownership. You have enough land that's interesting enough that you could, you could develop an entire park around this campground. While you look at Fort Tom, you look at, down at Lower Bridge, and, you know, 50 acres is enough area to put in a campground, and maybe a little bit of park, but really, the benefit is that you have access to all of this BLM land, thousands and thousands of acres of BLM land along the middle Deschutes River, right adjacent to that, to that county ownership. And, you know, drafter, you know, there's not, it's not as much about what's around the campground site, it's about, you know, kind of a really good location, you know, conveniently located within the city of Lapine. And when we think about people using these campgrounds for, you know, for their recreational getaway, or for, you know, a place to land for two weeks while you're kind of exploring the area and, you know, you know, maybe bringing your RV while you're, while you're trying to find a place to live when you just landed a job or something like that, the sites are very different in terms of the opportunities that they present, and how do you, you know, how do you deal with that in the feasibility studies that you would complete for these different sites? I mean, will each one have kind of its own story, essentially? Or, you know, it's, you know, like a vision and a story, or options and opportunities for each, or, you know, will we get kind of standard information for all three?
Yeah, that's an, that's an interesting point. We've been talking about that quite a bit. I'm, I'm going to give a quick response, but then I want to turn it over to Matthew as well. At the highest level, I think you're right, that we need to be able to describe what the strengths and opportunities are that each site will offer, and present that in the context of demand. The work that we did for BLM to map out recreation scarcity in Oregon was intended for this very kind of question, like, what are the most scarce kinds of opportunities relative to the whole suite of supply? So, you know, for example, that BLM site, if we already have other good camping opportunities nearby, even if it's a highly desirable site, the camping, the camping piece of it might not be that scarce. And I think the RV capacity, the Lapine issue that you're describing, is a whole different type of visitor profile, as you said, and again, we need to look at that market analysis, market rate question that you raised, Commissioner Bone, in terms of, you know, how does this fit into the overall suite? So, while the questions that we will ask are relatively standardized across them, I think the profile of sort of the opportunity varies, and it, they each are going to be responding to a different type of demand, and sort of understanding how scarce that opportunity is for each of them is sort of how I think about it. Matthew, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of how we would have standardized versus tailored descriptions for the different sites, given how different their opportunities and contexts are?
Well, I think what we're going to find are, the carrying capacity of each site is going to be, is going to be dramatically different, and we just heard a couple of reasons why. I think, you know, as to what options might be, we might include in our report, I think kind of the overlay of sort of the, the constraint study that we're going to go through is going to be, you know, instrumental in terms of how Eco Northwest starts to, starts to frame sort of what the, what the models for this facility might want to be. We can certainly, after doing our analysis, include, you know, a fair amount of narrative in terms of considerations for, for different opportunities on the site, you know, whether it's a park that is, that is developed in tandem with a parking facility, with a camping facility, sorry. I think we're going to find that there are a number of significant considerations, you know, due to the physical conditions on site, as well as sometimes access to the site. And so, all of these sort of things that we're going to learn during the analysis are going to start to feed into narratives that will, you know, between ESA and Eco Northwest work, will start to sort of clarify what the kind of larger programs might be able to be included on these, on these sites.
Just to be real tangible with this, let's say we're talking about a typical RV-hosted site versus a trail-focused site. We can identify and estimate the number of users of each of those kinds of sites based on these various survey sources that we've got at our disposal, and then also look at the existing supply of sites. So, we know roughly how many visitors we get to the region, we know how many trail users there are, and how many trips per trail users. We know Deschutes County resident usage versus visitors from outside the state to Deschutes County, and we can say, okay, for this site, there's this population of potential demand, they tend to spend this much on their trips, and they have this set of existing opportunities for where they're going to stay around it. And on this other RV site, we've got this set of visitors, they tend to spend this amount, this is what the market rates are currently, this is what the seasonality is, this is what summer versus fall versus winter, weekends versus weekday, what the levels are likely to be, when things are congested and when supply might outpace demand. So, again, I think we'd really want to make sure we're designing the study upfront to have data that you can run with when we're done, but I think having something standardized and based in real data will be the most useful.
So, supply outpaced demand, I don't think we're going to have that problem for a while. So, I mean, it's just interesting, let's not analyze it too much, I just want to get some camp spots on the ground, and I mean, I'm not critiquing you, I'm just thinking out loud here as I say this. And I mean, I'm not critiquing you, I'm just thinking out loud here as I say this, because we're just looking at, you know, proposals right now. But I think the answer is, how fast can we get some spots on the ground, because we've got need everywhere? I mean, and I'm referring to the Van Life people and all kinds of, I mean, people coming from all around the country.
Yes, no, when I said outpace, you know, there's always, there are always certain times of year when there's excess capacity. I wouldn't say that we're going to reach a situation where there's, you know, aggregate supply outpacing aggregate demand anytime soon. But thinking about these different sites, there is probably a seasonality to the uses that varies across sites.
But I just think of like Paulina and Eastlake, that's a place where I can sneak up to once in a while, and when the campgrounds are open, they're full.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know.
All year long, you know, all season long, it's a seasonal.
And this is the season of trying to book your permits at 7:00 AM on Recreation.gov, so we're all playing that game.
Great.
At the time of year when, you know, even, even these lower elevation sites that we're looking at, like Fort Thompson or down by Lower Bridge, in the middle of December, I'm not sure how much demand, I mean, we know that, you know, that the RV park at the Fairgrounds is, you know, 20, 25% built in the middle of winter, so.
Oh, I'm just, yeah, there's a standard seasonality. I, my only thought was, let's not analyze that too much, because we know there's going to be demand, and yes, there'll be seasonality in demand, that's fine.
No, and I, I mean, I.
I mean, I wasn't critiquing, I was just sharing my thoughts.
But by having a sense of demand could also give us a sense of how big we can go, too, right? Like Fort Thompson, you know, maybe you could put 80 sites in there, but, you know, if we, if we, you know, if we really understand the demand, well, it makes us feel more comfortable putting 80 sites there instead of just stopping at 30 sites. So, you know, there's real value in, in, you know, kind of understanding what demand is.
It's all good, I was just throwing information out there.
No, no, it's, I mean, it's an important point. I think we recognize that if sites are good and nice, there's a time during the summer where everything's going to be full. There's no question. We could build 10 campgrounds around here easily and keep them all full in the summer.
Jen, how many acres are on the west side of 97 in the Fort Thompson property? Do we know that?
I do believe I have that. Let me, 544.7, oh, on the west side, so 106 of those are east of 97.
106?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But it's close to, it's over 500 acres on the west, on the west side, right?
No, she just said it's a total of 544?
So, the total of 544.7 acres, oh, I think you're correct, Commissioner Jane, because there, the way it's built out, there's a block that's 106 that encompasses both sides of those. So probably right around 500 acres, just eyeballing that specific one that's 106 that shares both west and east of 97. So I can get that data for you, but we're looking right around 500, I think.
If I understand correctly, like this little, this little teeny little chunk wedge here is state parkland. So, I mean, if we, if we do things right with, you know, with adjacent landowners, I mean, we could have more than 500 acres to work with just on the west side of the highway.
And the project that I'm working on, the manufactured single-wide home park, is on 57 acres, and they have that mapped out at over 300 single wides on 57 acres. So, and it's right, it's right next to this. It's like, how, I mean, what a small world, right? Big county, small world.
Great, yeah, anything else? Or, I, what was the timing on these?
Yep, 45.
Yeah, okay, so we started five minutes late, and we're all a little bit less than, good.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, great to see you.
Thank you, Dr. Buckley.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, are we ready to jump into presentation number two?
Yeah, I think these next two are both going to be online?
Yes, they're, the next ones are all on Zoom. I believe we're looking for Jeff Bakie.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
Was there more to our packet than?
So there, these were provided at one point, and I just.
There were five of them, and I haven't.
Forgot to bring them.
Yeah, okay.
So Chrissy just pulled that up, it's 493 acres on the west side.
Okay, thanks, Chrissy.
That little corner, the, on the east side, right?
On the, so the east side then would be about 46 acres. Doing a quick math in my head.
Very good.
Flip through it to you, just like this.
I'm good, no, I, no, I just.
Yeah, they had your email wrong on the first page.
I know, I did notice that as well.
They had something, so I always find these things, right? And they had Susan's resume, like, double printed on this one, so I went.
I know that, too.
Yeah, and I was like going, okay. But they got it, it's right on the second page.
Is that somebody's desktop, or did we lose the whole thing?
Oh, can we stand up for a second?
Not losing. Promoting, okay, we're not losing.
It's almost 5 o'clock on the east coast, so if they're coming from Massachusetts.
Yeah. Oh, I guess Jeff has not joined us yet, so we may send. We do have his people from his team? Well, we can bring them up then.
I should be signing on any moment here, I think.
Yeah, he should be in in a minute, I think he was just grabbing a cup of coffee.
Hello, everyone, so we're starting to see some names and faces here. We're stepping into our second RFP session here today, and want to thank you very much for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
All right, this is Jen Patterson. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeff Bakie and his team with CHM Government Services to give your presentation, and then we'll open it up to questions and answers if that works for everyone.
And it looks like Jeffrey may not be with us yet, or maybe it's one of you, Jeffrey? Oh, maybe they're, there we go, okay.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, appreciate the opportunity to be here and present to the group. I guess without further ado, Jen, I understand we've got about 15 to 20 minutes to run through our PowerPoint, so I will, I will begin. So, again, great to be here, a very exciting project. I think we've assembled a really compelling team to support the county and its objectives of looking at campground feasibility in the pre-subscribed locations that you've identified. So let me get right into the presentation then. Next slide, please. Okay, to speak a little bit to the group, I'd like to have everybody do a little quick introduction. I know we don't have a lot of time, so, team, if we could just keep it to your names, your titles, companies, and your role on the team, and I'll begin. My name is Jeff Bakie, I'm the Managing Director of CHM Government Services. We are the prime contractor for this initiative, and I will be the overall project manager responsible for the team efforts. Margaret?
Sure, Margaret's still working on her video, but I'm Margaret Bailey, and I'm an advisor and will be supporting the team, the CHM team, on the public discussions with the federal agencies.
Tom?
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Lorenz, I'll be the Lead Financial Analyst with the project, and I work with Jeff at CHM Government Services.
Patrick?
Hi, my name is Patrick Olstad, I'm a Senior Landscape Architect with SE Group, a recreation planning firm and based in Vermont with Colorado office as well, and will be leading the campground site planning initiative.
Awesome. Drew?
Hey, Drew, I'm a recreation planner with SE Group, so I support our design team looking at recreation trends, demands, management of sites like this, so I do a little bit more of the planning and operations side of campgrounds and state parks and recreation projects like that.
Awesome. And last but certainly not least, Ben?
Ben Berry, I'm with Morris Merrily, I'm a civil engineer, and I'm the boots-on-the-ground for this project, and then also be involved in any sort of civil engineering analysis of the sites, creating background information from GIS, infrastructure, that sort of thing.
Great, well, thank you very much. Okay, next slide, please, Margaret. So we wanted to start off by demonstrating our understanding of the project. We think this is important to set the tone for the work that we will be doing under the solicitation. One more slide, Margaret? Okay, so, you know, our understanding is, is that this is a very dynamic region, has grown over the last decade pretty significantly, about a 10.6% growth rate between 2010 and 2020. Forecasts are only for this area to continue to grow by about another 30%, reaching just over 300,000 residents. We also recognize that this is an evolving economy, very much focused on agri-business, but evolving into a very strong rural tourism industry, and with that has come along an influx of visitation to the county. By recent count, about 4 million visits, requiring varying levels of overnight accommodations, leading to an interest to investigate alternative lodging through a potential development of a campground or a series of campgrounds, the composition of which will be determined. So that's kind of foundationally our understanding of why we are where we are and the interest of the county in looking at campground development and expansion. We have spent some time, fortunately, Ben, on our team is local, we've leveraged Ben's presence locally to do some site work. Ben, if you could just take a couple of minutes and kind of fill the board in on, you know, what we found relative to the three macro sites that have been identified?
Absolutely. So on Monday, I took a tour of the Crooked River Ranch, Fort Thompson, and drafter road sites. I should add that my first introduction to the Bend area was coming into town on the weekends to recreate and camp. So I have sort of a local perspective in that way. But I started out at the Crooked River site, and this one seemed to me like maybe the most like a recreational, out of the three that have been chosen, the most recreational, family-oriented of the sites. There's river access, there's power nearby, well water is about 150 feet deep, and a little bit of the septic system would be challenging because there's rock about three feet below ground, but it seemed like there were a lot of flat sites with good views. Then we spent time traveling down to Fort Thompson Lane. If you actually go to the next slide here, we have photos of Crooked River Ranch here on the left, and then you'll notice that there are no photos of Fort Thompson Lane. The gate was locked, and access to the site was, is fairly challenging because it's only off of 97, Highway 97 southbound. So we don't have a lot of information about Fort Thompson. I did do a little Googling of the area, and past memory from driving back and forth between Bend and Redmond showed that that area has been used primarily as an informal campsite by folks who are down and out. So that was a little bit of an interesting background on the area. And then last, I made it to the drafter road sites. The advantage of those sites is that they have municipal utilities located nearby. The setting was a little bit more challenging in that area, it seems like it's next to Highway 97, and there are a lot of industrial sites nearby. So kind of all of, all of those three sites together led to a few questions about what the overall goals are of the county towards each site. The first one seemed like it was most recreation-oriented, and the other two seemed more like RV sites that might have, be a jumping-off point to nearby amenities or perhaps something akin to affordable housing. So we'll have some questions about that further on in the presentation. But I think that concludes what I have to say about these for now, Jeff.
Great, thank you, Ben. We wanted to outline what we believe to be some desired project outcomes. Certainly, our work will hopefully leverage the best location consistent with your planning efforts, your vision, and the goals of the county. We want to look to develop campground concepts that explore a range of options, recreational that meet a broad economic strata of need and demand. We also want to look at determining the cost and the underlying investment feasibility of these campground developments, and then identify the sustainable business model that will continue the successful operation of these campgrounds from a management as well as a maintenance and cost perspective. So our project approach, I know our project approach was outlined in relative detail in our submission. We thought it was useful to just go over at a high level how we're going to address the requirements within the scope, and more importantly, how our team will work together to address each one of the objectives within the phases of work that were outlined. From an organization and a field work perspective, this is going to be a data gathering synthesis and organization phase. All three of our firms will be involved in this phase, ensuring that we're collecting the appropriate data, the breadth of data that best prepares us for a site visit to look at the sites and evaluate the sites. We're planning on doing that in Phase Two. We're going to be looking and evaluating the sites across each one of our disciplines. We'll be looking at the sites from a market perspective, accessibility, visibility, proximity to support amenities and facilities. We're certainly going to be looking at things from an environmental perspective. Ben touched on this a little bit in his review of the sites, the availability of infrastructure, power, water, sewer, and we're also going to be sensitive to environmental impact and making sure that we look at things from an environmental perspective. In Phase Three, we begin to do a deeper dive. We begin to look at what is the process and the feasibility of acquiring land from the Forest Service and BLM. We have very deep relationships with the Forest Service and BLM that will allow us to reach the right people, to render decisions about the processes to secure this land, the ability to secure this land, and the timeframe associated with securing these parcels. So we'll be working as CHM to leverage those relationships to understand how best to effectuate any acquisition of these parcels. Phase Three, we come back together again, we're looking in a much more detailed way at each one of the proposed sites. We're looking at conceptually how an RV park or campground might lay out on that site, we're looking at that layout from an operational perspective, from a locational perspective relative to infrastructure, and then ultimately looking at it from a financial and investment perspective to ensure that what we might propose makes financial investment sense. And then we're going to document our recommendations in a detailed executive summary report, which we will deliver to the commission.
Can I just ask that, that step three feasibility of acquiring Forest Service or BLM land, I don't believe we're still considering any sites where acquisition of land would be necessary? Is that still part of your scope of work?
We saw.
Can I, Jeff, can I go ahead and respond? So, to be clear, you're correct, within our original scope, this is Margaret, within our original scope, based upon your original request, it was Forest Service and BLM land. Obviously, the Forest Service site came off the map of the ones provided us. In the map that was provided us for the BLM land, it was difficult to understand if that, we couldn't tell exactly based upon the land maps and even the resource management plan of the BLM, whether the parcel was one for disposal or if it was not. And then if you're, if it's not one that is for disposal, then you'd have to enter into a, probably a lease with the BLM. So as we understood it, one of the sites is still a BLM site unless we misunderstood your maps.
If we're talking about the, the site that's near Crooked River Ranch upstream of Lower Bridge, the county does own a number of small parcels in that area, the biggest of which is probably about 50 acres, 50 contiguous acres immediately adjacent to a few thousand acres of BLM land. So, we would, we would own, we would own the land necessary for the campground itself, probably, and then the BLM land adjacent really represents kind of the recreational amenity attraction for that area.
Okay, that's a very important clarification. So if we're not going to be dealing with, you know, outside of general recreation, how that parcel is zoned in the BLM Resource Management Plan in regards to its use adjacent to your parcel, then obviously. to your parcel, then obviously this phase is, is not going to be as, as necessary. And yeah, so that's, that's an important clarification, Jeff, that I don't think we understood as the, as the, as the maps came back.
No, I, I would agree, and I think with that clarification, we can make modifications ultimately to our budget to reflect that.
Great, thank you.
We put a couple of slides in here to demonstrate our level of experience. I think we, we did some of this in our response to the solicitation, but we've highlighted a couple of key examples that we wanted to, to present to you. Margaret, I'll, I'll let you key on, key in on this specific one that CHM played a significant role in for, for RVIA.
Sure, you know, from a subject matter expertise on the market for camping in the United States, at the state level, at the county level, at the city level, you know, CHM has played at all, with all of those levels. This slide here is a output of a national study that was commissioned by the RV Industry Association to understand the supply of campgrounds and the distribution between public and private. Our firm was responsible for that, which means that we have this amazing database of attributes of campgrounds, both at the national and at the regional level. So it, and it also indicates the, the relationships we have both with the industry and the players in the industry and the standards in the industry. So as we are working with our team members, SE Group, about what, what, what do we want in a campground, what are the attributes that the market's looking for, this is a clear indication hopefully to you that this is, this is a core asset class for CHM. So when it comes to understanding market, understand scoping financials and understanding options for public and private partnerships, you know, we are pretty much best in class, we think, and we're excited to share that with you.
Great, thank you, Margaret. Okay, moving on, Drew and, and Patrick, why don't you give a kind of an overview on the example that we've highlighted here?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. So yeah, SE Group Outdoor Recreation Planning and Design is really at the core of what we do. It's, it's something we've been doing for many years with our origins in the ski industry. That's over the years expanded to much broader outdoor recreation, recreation planning. In recent times, we've been really getting involved with the campground design and planning. Most recently for the state of New Hampshire, we did a kind of very relevant study for them, a feasibility study, looking at a number of potential campground development and redevelopment sites. And so this is a study you see here for one potential site that really was, that particular site was a bit of a blank slate. There was an adjacent campground that they managed. This is the state of, sorry, New Hampshire State Parks System. And so this just shows kind of a schematic level study where, which is I think very relevant to this project, to really see kind of what the, what the yield would be in terms of the number of sites. We do a very thorough analysis of the constraints and the opportunities, looking at the recreational kind of assets that are there, and then looking at kind of what mix of camping offerings makes sense given the market. So we show a range of tent sites, shelters, RV sites, and then just showing like a, you know, vehicular circulation system that connects it all up and kind of looking at pods and even thinking of how this could be phased. So we really do understand how campgrounds function and how to site plan for them effectively. So, you know, using that kind of data that would come out of CHM's work would really inform how we would approach this work. And then this kind of level of study helps us to develop cost estimates, understand what the capital cost would be with MM kind of filling in some of the gaps and the utility infrastructure and really kind of, really creating a vision of what the potential would be of these campgrounds. So, you know, this was a very successful study we did for them that's now led into them moving forward with developing several of these campgrounds to a detailed level to put out to bid for construction. We're also doing some work out west in Colorado on some campground redevelopments for the Forest Service. So that kind of gives, you know, rounds out some of our most recent campground experience.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Dan, you want to wrap us up here?
Absolutely. So I have pretty, a pretty short pitch here. We have a growing office in Central Oregon and then a deep bench of history in Montana and Wyoming where we've had offices for over 75 years with a lot of experience working with the Forest Service, with state parks and campgrounds. This photo here is from Yellowstone National Park in Wyoming. So we have, we have a lot of experience within our company and then we have boots on the ground locally with experience dealing with some of the issues that you run into in Central Oregon, primarily large amounts of rock right near the ground surface.
Great, thank you, Ben. So I think in closing, one thing I'd like to leave the, the commission with is that, you know, we, we brought this team together, we think this team delivers a complement of services that will yield an analysis that will support your objectives. We'll be focused on, you know, identifying which sites generate market demand and are , are supported from a market perspective. We'll work through the team to identify conceptually what kind of a campground will meet the market expectations and demand. We'll look at that from a layout, from an operations perspective. We're then going to underwrite that from a financial perspective to determine that there is financial viability to the campground, and then we're going to look at the costs and the investments to ensure that we've got investment feasibility. This is a very robust market-based planning approach that at the end yields a very tangible financial feasibility conclusion that we feel is in the best interest of our client, and for that we thank you very much.
Thank you, very thorough. So a couple of thoughts for that Fort Thompson property. So there was somebody came into town and they had to park their trailer down in like Shamalt, which is about an hour south of Bend because he was looking for a spot somewhere, you know, in the summertime. So, you know, that Fort Thompson property is, you know, kind of by the highway and, and, you know, not, not next to a river or whatever, but man, there's still probably, at least seasonally, it would be full just for people coming and going, you know. And Commissioner Chang mentioned last time, just somebody looking for somewhere to land for two weeks, maybe looking to, you know, move or sell in or just, you know, looking for that, that shock absorber space. So that's kind of what, what that opportunity might be there. Also, there's no rocks in Lapine if you, if you, if you see. So I mean, Southern Deschutes County is just soft volcanic soil, there's no rocks there.
Groundworm, no rocks.
I agree, and there are all utilities in that, that site, which makes that area much nicer. One question for Fort Thompson without wanting to get too far into the weeds here, has there been any discussion with, with ODOT about access issues for that site?
I have done some access questions.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
This is Commissioner Darren, yes, I have done some access questions because there's a single wide manufactured home park on 57 acres that I'm working on, and so we've been running by through ODOT, what can we do there?
And I, I've also had some discussions specifically about the Fort Thompson property with ODOT and our, our county road director. And he suggested that, that there was the potential to explore, I forget what it's called, but basically additional lane, kind of a, you know, an, an exit lane, a long exit lane. You know, maybe not as good for, you know, extending to, to get on to 97 heading south, but definitely like an exit lane, getting off of 97, that, that should be very doable with that property. And he also said that we may have the opportunity, we don't, we don't currently own the easement, but there, there may be opportunities to negotiate an easement from what's called Huddle Road on the other side, on the, on the, coming from the west side of the property. So yeah, some of the, some of the access issues have been, have been explored a little bit already. And to, to add to Commissioner DeBones' description of the, the Fort Thompson property, it's, you know, I, I also thought it was, you know, you know, 500 acres, it's not huge. But I brought some people from the Central Oregon Trail Alliance, the, the mountain biking, the, the, it's a volunteer group that manages 500 miles of mountain bike trail on public lands here in, in the region, and they, they were very, very excited about that property as a, as a park location with trails. They, they showed me, immediately turned around and showed me a map of someplace in Arizona, it might've been Sedona, where, you know, a similar 500, 500 acre site, there was 12 miles of mountain bike trails in, in the, in, you know, comparable sized site. And I don't, can't imagine I was packing that much in there, but they really liked the kind of rolling landscape and the little low rock ridges and the beautiful views of Mount Washington and the Three Sisters and things like that. So I, I do think that there's, you know, I, I, I don't know how you get away from the highway noise, but I do think that, you know, scenically and in terms of the landscape, it's, it's a, that there's some opportunities for, for genuine outdoor recreation out there.
Okay, I want one follow-up question to that before I continue to hog all of the question time. Is that something that would be complementary with the campground? You think it would, you would be trying to build in mountain bike trails, maybe with the campground in the center?
I, I, I would hope that there'd be some synergy with that.
Gotcha.
And, and you know, what a kind of, one of my, one of my ulterior motives with this is that I, I'd like to see the city of Bend, sorry, I'd like to see the Deschutes National Forest put in place dispersed camping prohibitions immediately adjacent to the city of Bend, just because we have, we do, we're, the dispersed camping use of the federal lands immediately adjacent to a city of 100,000 people, it is, it's huge, it's really huge and it's having a lot of impacts. And I don't think that we can tell people, I, I don't think we can institute a one-mile buffer where, you know, dispersed camping is prohibited around the city of Bend until there's more places for, you know, more developed campgrounds to send people to.
Yeah, that's a common theme we see, we're working on a project in Silver City, New Mexico, that's very similar. The city is about a third the size probably of Bend and then the surrounding region is smaller as well, but there's absolutely that displacement, kind of same thing happening there. I think adding the mountain bike amenity to that campground would be really advantageous like for both the mountain biking and the camping opportunities. So anywhere there are opportunities to do that, that would filter into our analysis of the sites as well. We'd want to not think about just the, you know, how many campsites could we fit into this site, but more about what is the total offering that the site could, could provide to somebody and, and the desirability of that. Do you all see more than one site being potentially developed or are you looking to develop, find the one site that's the preferred site? Do you have a sense of that yet?
So, yeah, so we're the three commissioners, a little bit different opinions all around here, I'll just tell you what I'm thinking. We're looking for those opportunities, public or private, to promote, you know, so you're, you're asking a question, which one would we want, but it was like, no, let's go, if there's private market opportunities in other lands, let's, you know, empower them, referring to private land, or offer these, public or privately operated, on a contract. And then also, yeah, what is the relationship with the Forest Service? So yeah, we're not trying to get to one, we're just trying to add capacity from my point of view.
Yeah, I'd say from my perspective, a lot of it depends on the financial feasibility. You know, we are, you know, I, I picture if we develop one of these sites, you know, county-owned property, except for Drafter, I mean, Drafter I could, could imagine, I can imagine we, we find out it's, it's feasible and then we make that up, you know, we may, we kind of hand someone a, you know, campground in a box as a, as a, you know, as an acquisition opportunity, but the other two, the other two properties, I, I wouldn't picture selling those county lands. And you know, if we're going to be developing those, we are asking the taxpayers to front the money. I, I would want to see very strong, you know, you know, very short payback period, very strong financials on those to, to, to proceed with more than one at a time.
That's really helpful, I think, probably Jeff will chime in on this, but you know, there's lots of different options of concessionaire or contractor. Help you explore all of those different arrangements, and I think CHM is really well-suited to, to look at some of that. So that's really helpful. Because that was our next question related to that is, do you envision operating some of these sites? Maybe that tells us a lot about where you all are at.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth, Drew. If I may, Commissioner, Commissioners, you know, we, it's encouraging to hear that you're open to what the economic opportunity is, and in the financial and investment underwriting process, we may come back with multiple opportunities. And we can look at those opportunities individually or as a portfolio. And I think I heard, and I'm somewhat encouraged, that there's no preconceived notion at this point in time as to how you might consider managing those sites or developing those sites, which might bring into play some options for you to consider, whether that's a public-private partnership through a concession contract, a lease, a management contract, or some variation thereof. We've got experience in, in looking at all of those options.
I mean, if anything, I would say we might have a bias towards not operating it ourselves, you know, conceivably owning it ourselves, but you know, we are, I, I, I don't think that, that this Board of Commissioners is really eager to add to the ranks of county employees. And we don't currently have a parks department, so that would be, you know, a brand new function for us, but if there's, you know, if there's opportunities to, to own, to own the, to own the park and offer that as an amenity for, for visitors and for our residents, but you know, minimize the human resource impact, that, that might be interesting.
Absolutely.
That's very wise. We, we do see counties create their own department to manage a campground like this, but it's often not the most efficient. So we were curious if that was of interest because we saw that you did not currently manage campgrounds like that.
So I have a question, this is Margaret the Invisible. It has to do with, you talked about the economic payback and obviously Ben talked about the infrastructure. You know, as CHM has done these public-private partnerships, the first thing we say to our clients is, are you prepared to fund through some sort of special bonding authority or, or whatever, you know, core infrastructure, you know, to the sites? Because typically, because the price of a campsite that even with a high drop-down doesn't yield that much cash, the developers are able to handle above the ground, but everything below the ground tends to be something that there needs to be some help on. So are you, do you have authorities? How do you think about that? Is that something you'd be willing to consider?
We haven't got that far yet.
Yeah, I, I do think, you know, at, at one end of the spectrum of, of possibilities is if, 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 if a consultant can deliver us decent financial feasibility and some very attractive kind of visuals that help kind of sell, sell a vision of, of a, you know, of a park. Conceivably, I mean, this is something that some counties would consider going out to a voter-approved, going, going out for a voter-approved bond to, to move along. There may be, there's certainly a huge support for outdoor recreation in, in this community. I, I don't know whether there's an appetite to tax ourselves, you know, specifically to, to, to add capacity to the recreational amenities that we have, but again, that might also just depend on the, the financial, the financial feasibility of, of doing this, you know, if it's, if it's got a reasonably short payback and it, and, and it's pretty robust, then the, the county is in a position to, to, you know, to, to, to borrow directly without asking for a voter-approved bond to, to, to do something as well.
Thank you.
The campground isn't quite the cost of, you know, the, the library or an indoor rec center, so that almost certainly will involve a bond. So we can help you explore those opportunities and look at thresholds with that too, you know, if there's a if-then scenario with that.
Also, remember that one of the other starting points for us is what, once again, for me, not, maybe not all of us, but- again, for me, not, maybe not all of us, but, uh, is there opportunities to put more campground, um, facilities on the public lands in the area? So I'm talking Forest Service lease, BLM, uh, opportunities where it's full-on somebody else's contract, lease, uh, facility. Cause we have a, an example of lake resorts, uh, you know, around the lakes here, privately-owned lake resorts on long-term federal leases. Well, not even long-term, I think they're like 20 years, but with the expectation of it being, uh, extended. Um, you know, so there, and that's, you know, we've, we've basically taken that out of this RFP at this time, but that's the other scenario that, that's, you know, if we have some good analysis of, of the, uh, you know, the market demand and the seasonality and the, the rates that are, the market's willing to go, maybe there's a trigger for other actions that could happen around this effort.
Yeah, and I think all of those entities will be looking if indeed we're moving forward with something that is successful and it could trigger a level of interest on their part to maybe think differently about expanding their recreational portfolio on some of those, you know, more federal public lands.
Yep, so that's a byproduct of this effort.
This team would be really ready to help support that kind of conversation if it, if and when it does go there. Um, we have a lot of experience at SC Group with those long-term, um, special use permits with resorts, ski areas, also campgrounds and lakeside resorts as well. Um, and so it can help kind of explore some of those options if that's needed into the future. And we'll be thinking about that alongside looking at these specific sites that are owned by the county as well. We can, we're familiar with those topics, so it can kind of filter that in.
As I say, I mean, so that any publicly accessible, you know, analysis and data reporting that's available, that will hopefully other people be able to pick that up, you know, timely research. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much for joining us. Uh, worked out real well on Zoom today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Have a great day.
To spend some time on those mountain bike trails or maybe using one of these campgrounds one day.
We have our third presenter in the waiting room, but would you like to take?
Just a five-minute break or four-minute break.
Okay.
Yeah, just to stand up.
I wanna see if I can still stand, yeah?
Michael Crane. Andrew.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're back from a recess. Thanks for being flexible today.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, our final presentation today comes from Crane Associates. I'd like you, I'd like to introduce Michael Crane. Michael, if you could please state your name and organization for the record and then we'll turn it over to you.
You got it right. Michael Crane, Crane Associates.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Um, is your, uh, reading off? Should I, uh, start the presentation now?
Yes, yeah, please proceed.
Okay, let me share.
Oh, yeah. We're, yeah, the, the screen for us is, it shows recess still.
Yeah.
There we, there we go.
But you can see me?
Yes, I can see you, yep.
Okay.
We can see you in the, in the meeting room.
Are we recording and should we be, should we be recording in it? If so, are we recording?
Yeah. And broad.
So we just have the recess screen still up on the, on ours.
Just one minute, Michael. We're just fixing a glitch here.
No problem.
I'm not sure if he can see us.
Yeah, maybe not. There's our desktop. So, yeah, everything was working, didn't have this camera on. Okay, please proceed. Thank you.
Thanks again for having me. Um, uh, I, I will present just a, uh, maybe seven minutes or so about me and my company and then another, uh, 10 minutes or so about, uh, the process, then we could open up for the, uh, conversation. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Crane Associates started about 21 years ago and, uh, I'm an environmental economist. Uh, I have a little over 25 years of experience. I ran a regional planning agency for a while and then I started Crane Associates, for better or worse, uh, 21 years ago and I haven't looked back. Um, we specialize in recreation tourism economics and we've done projects around the world. Um, we've had, uh, maybe 100 similar projects to something what you're asking for, large and small. We work for, uh, clients of small towns throughout America, uh, county governments, state governments. Um, we've worked for, um, foreign nations, um, the United Nations, World Bank, USAID, uh, other, uh, the US military in Iraq, um, the State Department. I've worked for, uh, uh, royal family members in the United Arab Emirates, uh, and, um, projects as small as $5,000 to usually several hundred thousand. Um, I'll work for anyone and, um, and I enjoy, uh, doing what I do very much. So, uh, in, in, in example of a project that we did for ecotourism in Iraq, uh, made the BBC News and it, we became a, um, an award-winning project for Ecotourism Society, International Ecotourism Society, uh, and got an award in Scotland that year. Um, uh, we, we, we were honored to have, uh, been chosen by the United Nations to go up, uh, to ski foreign, uh, foreign lands in the borders of Turkey and Iraq, uh, only to find out later that it's full of, uh, uh, landmines, but, uh, that's another story. Um, but, uh, I'll go, uh, to the depths of wherever I need to go to get the project done. Um, I completed, uh, the business plan and financial pro forma for the first national park in the United Arab Emirates. Uh, I was, I convinced, uh, the, uh, the ruler of the Arab, of the Emirates, uh, this Emirates, one of the seven Emirates is called, uh, Fajrak. And, um, I worked with his son, the Crown Prince, um, to develop the first national park in that country. Um, we worked closely with, uh, World Wildlife Fund. Um, another project was in the Kingdom of Lesotho, uh, developing, uh, analysis of camping and ecotourism in that country. Um, bringing up some foreign countries, uh, mainly because the difficulty of collecting data in foreign countries is extreme and, um, we were very successful in those. So when we come to the United States, we really, um, we were really able to get really solid core, um, primary data. An example closer to home is this one, uh, in, for Clackamas County, Mount Hood Territory, uh, Recreation Market Analysis. Uh, I spent nearly five months on the ground doing that project and determining the supply and demand for recreation throughout, uh, the Mount Hood Territory. Uh, this is me actually doing the work, uh, not just laying around. Um, that camper, that camper actually was bought in Bend and, um, and so was the 2014 Chevy Silverado that's sitting on. And I bought that to do the job. Uh, and if I wasn't able to sell that, uh, at the end of the project, I would've lost all my profit. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing that up just to, as an example of the depths I go to make sure that my client has the right data and the right analysis done. This is me in Clackamas County, not too far from your borders of you, um, analyzing a campsite. And, um, this prompted one of the county commissioners in Clackamas County to get up in a public meeting and say, I've never seen a consultant do this kind of work. So that's the kind of person I am if you hire me. Um, I've done a lot of market feasibility and financial pro formas for hotels and campgrounds throughout, uh, New England. Um, finished one on Lake Champlain. Um, here's another campground and financial market analysis pro forma on, on Lake Champlain for a campground. Uh, the, the picture on the bottom, uh, the person in the center holding my report is the investor who just signed a document, uh, committing $3 million to put down on a new campground in this town of Mariah. Uh, the town supervisor is on the right and, um, I'm on the left and another town supervisor is on the far left. Um, so I take projects from the raw data to primary data, understanding the market feasibility, right up to finding investors and finding the right, uh, operational, uh, program that will make it work. So that's what I plan on doing for you. This is a, a short timeline and, uh, the project in its, uh, in, in a nutshell. Um, first, right here, we start with the project vision. Um, I won't, I'll come out there and we, we'll have a workshop and we want, I really wanna know why you're doing this. What, what is it that you really want to get out of it? I understand from the RFP what I, what is, what is written in there, but it's deeper than that, uh, like most projects and it's a lot more detailed. And so I will get out there and work with you face-to-face to understand exactly what it is that's driving you to do this. Why are you doing it? What is it you want at the end of the day? Um, who will operate this? Um, a lot of my analysis will advise you on who will operate this. Integration with other goals of your county? What kind of goals do you have? Um, and how is this, uh, project going to serve some of them? Is this a housing or a recreation project? Um, you alluded to alleviating housing for homeless, uh, houseless people. Um, just so you know, I have a very long portfolio of, of affordable housing projects. Uh, you can go to my website and see that. I, I've, uh, I'm on the shortlist for market analysts for, uh, development banks in, in New England and I'm on the shortlist for the Vermont Housing Finance Agency, the one agency that distributes low-income housing tax credits. They use my company to determine, um, uh, affordable housing demand. Uh, so I have that side of me as well. Um, is this going to certain purposes or visitors? Are you trying to attract visitors? So we're gonna go into all of that. And then I go into the site analysis. Um, you know, topo vegetation, water, access to the sites, uh, the site capacity, um, neighboring uses, uh, land use regulations. Um, and then I go into the demand, visitation, your campground occupancy rates, your participation rates from all the different campgrounds around. Your, what you expect to capture, what market share will you capture? And from there, we'll start to serve, uh, revenue projections. Um, and then I do a thorough, uh, supply analysis. I will personally visit every campground and, and understand how they compete or will compete with your projected vision for the project. Um, then I will create for you a, a five-year financial pro forma. My pro formas usually attract investors, like I showed you. Uh, uh, another project of mine attracted the largest campground operator in the country, K O A. Uh, they saw my financial pro formas and flew the president of the country, uh, company across the country, uh, to our campground to, um, to inspect this, uh, investment opportunity that I presented that was on, um, in an Excel spreadsheet. And finally, the operational structure. I do a lot of analysis for government, uh, companies. The only, um, clients I have are government agencies. And, um, so I do a lot of capacity analysis, uh, and, and understand your capabilities, whether you will be able to operate this campground, which I doubt. So, uh, how do we create this? Will it be a public-private partnership, uh, a concession or so forth? Um, I will provide you with a, a roadmap to, um, to, to, to get this thing up and running and, and so forth. So, uh, next slide should, I, I wanted to, uh, tell you a little bit about my work in Oregon. Um, I did two statewide surveys in Oregon for that project in Mount Hood and a national market study. A national market study analyzing the entire country and, and Oregon's ability to attract visitors. And, uh, so that's what you see on the right. On the left is the market profiles of people who are recreating in, in Oregon and, uh, this was for Clackamas County, but I have the whole state here, so we'll be able to use this. Um, I will up, I will upgrade this, uh, to current 2003 data, but we've under, we need to understand the market profiles of people coming and wanting to camp. So, um, this will tell us who they are. Uh, when you get a market profile, it's where they come from, their household income, um, their family size, their age, their occupations, what their, uh, their, what their other, uh, activities and things that they like to do, uh, on the ground when they're camping. Um, so, so that we can create a campground for you that serves the, the most needs for the, for the market that you're attracting. The supply analysis will look at all, uh, of campgrounds, uh, all the public campgrounds that the Forest Service provides and so forth, all the private campgrounds, the RV parks, um, all the dispersed campground and discreet campground. That's, that's hip camps and dispersed camps. Um, all of that is competition for your campground. So you, I will analyze all of it and so we will understand, uh, uh, what's competing against your campgrounds or your proposed campgrounds and what will, what the demand is. So finally, just a summary of, uh, the, the, the deliverables that I'll give you. So it's a very detailed analysis of both supply and demand that I, that I perform personally on the ground. Um, a, a gap analysis that will give you the market, target markets. So you'll be able to target for your marketing purposes where and when and whom, what, that your markets should be targeting. So, you know, is it, is it Mercedes-Benz owners in, in Portland or is it, you know, F250 owners in, in southern Oregon? You know, so it's that kind of information. Um, and then, uh, I create the financial pro forma and the business plan for the, for the campground, for each of your campgrounds. Uh, so the, the operations, uh, the revenues, the expected, uh, expenses, um, both your capital expenses to build it, uh, how you're going to finance it, uh, and then, um, your operating expenses and your operating income. Uh, all of that gets put down on, uh, in clear terms, uh, to attract investors. Uh, that's my audience when I do something like that. Uh, and then, uh, an operational plan, who is going to do it and how. Uh, and then, um, from there, I leave you with a clear roadmap of actions that will eventually lead to the construction of campgrounds. You're not doing this just for the fun of it. You want people to camp there. So, um, I will provide you with a step-by-step analysis. Um, and I do take my clients all the way to construction. Um, this proposal that I have for you does not, but, uh, you know, if you wanted to, uh, after, I present you with a roadmap, you say, hey, Michael, would you find the people to do this? Uh, yep, we could, we could start, uh, on this next phase if you wanted. And, um, that's, uh, all that I have for you at this moment for the presentation.
Thank you very much. So, uh, as you, you might've, uh, if you followed the other, um, presentations, the demands there is to say, uh, I, I refer to it as a market rate campground, you know, a willing, a willing person with a, with any kind of RV with a couple dollars to spend the night at the market rate. Uh, so that opens it up. So that opens it up to, you know, all kinds of, and you know, we're talking about three different locations here, but my point is that's the high level. That's the starting point. We know we have van life people, we have, you know, seasonal people, we have friends and family coming through central Oregon, we have destination campgrounds already at the lake resorts. So this is, and we can make, this is a beautiful amenity, but it's also a shock absorber for people coming and going. You know, we don't, we have very dense development patterns in, in our cities now. So, you know, you don't, you don't invite your friend over with his fifth wheel and put it in the side yard or the backyard. It's just, we don't even have that opportunity because some places do. So it is, it's kind of that shock absorber is one of the aspects of this. And all kinds of opportunities too. I mean, it's, you know, if we can make a beautiful destination campground and make it successful for everybody, there's no downside in that either.
No, and if you have a, it depends on your operational plan. I mean, if you're going to go towards a concession, that, that concessionaire will have different objectives as well, which, you know, profit motive. And so the amenities that that person may be leaning towards may be different than a simple shock absorber overflow campground for the other places. So you'll want to think about that, or I will certainly think about that. I mean, it.
Well, we're looking at three different locations and they all have three, all kinds of different potentials.
So, Michael, my question is about sort of the, the site development end of the equation, you know, understanding, you know, understanding our, our market, our target market, understanding the demand, understanding their willingness to pay, you know, you know, having some sense of, you know, you know, costs to operate and, and, you know, potential revenue, that, that's all extremely, that is an extremely important piece. I didn't get, I didn't, and clearly you have a good grasp of all of that aspect, but I didn't get as much of a sense of kind of your, your understanding of the development process itself, you know, kind of, how do we, you know, how do we get wastewater, you know, how do we deal with wastewater treatment in, in a given site? You know, how do we, you know, how do you get utilities and road and transportation access? What kind of, you know, what do we need to keep in mind about, you know, putting in tent pads or, you know, like the, the RV sites themselves in a, in a given campground area? So do you, are you like a one-person shop? Or do you have kind of associates that, that, that do other, do other pieces of, of the project? Or do you just know all of that stuff and I, I just didn't, I didn't pick up on it when you were talking about it?
Well, I, I've been in the development field since the beginning of my career, right? You know, I was the executive director of a regional planning commission and had to review all Act 250 permits, which is statewide land use permits. And so all the development constraints is something I'm very familiar with. The, the infrastructure and access and all of those issues is something I can do with. I, I would provide you with the, you know, there's the whole checklist of everything that needs to be reviewed. I am not an engineer and I'm not providing you with any engineering studies. I don't believe that you asked for that. So there won't be any soil tests and so forth, but there certainly will be an analysis of endangered species. I will be able to know that from research. There will be an analysis of, of vegetation, whether it's endangered or not. There will be analysis of, of traffic patterns and access. Your, your engineers will know a lot of information that I need to ask. Whether, whether cement pads are available to be poured there or not, it's, if we have that information that's vacant, then we would find it, we would, we would find out. I mean, if you, if you wanted to say, okay, well, we don't really know if we can run a line this far. And, and if existing environmental information is not on record as to tell me that, then we may have to go and find out. I didn't, I didn't know that you were asking for that kind of information as far as, you know, water engineering and so forth.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't think we necessarily, like, I don't, I wasn't necessarily asking to, to know everything about how a site would be developed and, you know, provide us with a, you know, stamped engineering design or anything, but, you know, there, there's conceivably fatal flaws with some of these sites with, you know, like, how are you going to put septic in here? Those kinds of questions and I, I would, it would, I just want to make sure that, that that's part of, that's part of your, your repertoire going into this and that, and that we get, we get the, you know, if there, if there, if there's site constraints that are going to drive costs through the roof for development or, or things like that, that, that gets captured in the process.
Yeah. You know, usually that kind of information is researchable, you know, where the, where the infrastructure lines are and, you know, site visits will be able to tell you that. If we get to a point where we're really baffled by whether this is going to work or not, we may have to hire an engineer. But I've taken, I've taken campgrounds through to construction before and hotels and affordable housing projects through to construction. I know what I know and I know what I don't know. And you, I, I think, you know, we can, we can get you to the point where the, the analysis will provide you with everything you need to know. There will be, you know, engineers will say, well, we don't, we have to test and so forth. Yeah. You know, to go from a feasibility study to construction, there's a few stages in between, as you probably know, you know, and usually that's site analysis and pre-construction feasibility, which, which calls in the engineers. If you wanted to put those people on this, this stage of the project, we can do that.
Yep.
My, my budget is pretty low and, you know, if there is room, we could, we can hire those people locally.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting the addition of, of, the addition of, you know, that kind of, that kind of engineering expertise. I just want, when, you know, when you hand us some, when you hand us a pro forma and it has certain assumptions about how much things are going to cost to get us to, you know, to a campground, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we guard against underestimates of costs.
So, Michael, this is Commissioner Adair. On your price proposal, you had four sites and we've actually trimmed it to three sites. And that was, you had a unit price of 11,000 a site. And then task seven, you said it was for the Forest Service and BLM lands and that, those had been eliminated? So I'm just wondering, but then you said your proposal does not lead to construction. So that might be something that you would want to add on here?
That, that's right. I mean, we can, we can work it that way. So we could add on, you know, we could add on an engineer to identify the, the site construction constraints.
So when you worked in, with Clarkamas County, was that in 2003 then? Was that 20 years ago?
No, 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 it was 2015.
2015, okay.
Yeah, and I don't want to suggest that, that we ask, we ask the consultants who've responded to this RFP to add design and engineering. I just want to make sure that whatever numbers they, they give us are, you know, for construction costs are, you know, reasonable, you know, fairly well-founded. And then.
Commissioner, I could, you know, okay, I'm sorry. I could tell you, after doing this many times, that the, the cost per campsite doesn't vary that much from, from a certain class of campground. So you have like a K O A kind of class of campground. And I'll tell you right now that you go through 50 different K O As and if you were, have the opportunity to open up their construction costs, the, the cost per site is within 10%, 20% of each other from site to site. So, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a price per site. And then a different class of campground would have a range of price per site. And I, I could do that in, in, in Deschutes County and so forth and figure it out that way. And so we could, we could, we can do it a price per site. A per-site construction cost estimates is probably better so to give you more flexibility on, you know, your budgets.
So really, like even if one campground needs a significant chunk of road built into it versus another that's, you know, right at the edge of the highway or, you know, one site has access to, to power and, you know, like a wastewater system and the other one needs, needs septic, it really doesn't, there's, there's not that much variability, huh?
There's variability, but that site that's next to the road is going to have a different problem. And the one that has a big rock in it is going to have a different, you know, has, has some other benefits. And by the time you get 100 sites built, experience shows us that it starts to level off. I mean, there's variability. It's all about the class of campground. So you want to, do you want a swimming pool? And, and if so, you know, that has all kinds of operational costs and so forth. You want a store, a huge store, a laundromat, you know, that kind of stuff? Or do you just want to roll in and have, you know, showers? You know, you know, are these, are these sites nice and level and poured concrete or are they dirt? You know? So when you, when you identify a different class of campgrounds, you won't find a lot of variability on a per-site basis. There is variability, but not much.
Thank you.
So Mr. Crane, what's, what's the big picture out there with van life people and RVs and kind of, you know, you see an upswing in this? Because you're on the other side of the country. I mean, you may, may or may not be there right now, but yeah, what's, what's the big picture view of this campground opportunities in the near future?
I wish I could show you my parking lot. The park, okay, I'm in Florida right now.
He's in Florida.
Okay, Florida, okay.
Yeah, he's got two locations and one's on Blue Heron Village, so.
And I'll tell you, and I'm telling you, I'm down here working for two sites, two projects. I'm doing a feasibility study in Broward County, very similar to yours, and then another one up in, up near Destin. And I'm living out of my van. And so I know what van life is like from a very personal perspective. And, you know, I'm on, I'm on all the networks and so forth and, and information, trading, trading information, and I, I built my van myself. And, and so it's a, it's quite a growing field and, and there's a unique trend in that world that people are looking for. You know, it's, the campgrounds, campgrounds, traditional campgrounds don't provide them actually with the, with the, what they're, what they're asking for. And you could provide, you could do a van life campground, it would be very different. You know, a glamping van life campground would be very different than an RV park. And I, my report, my study will tell you how many of that kind of sector, that kind of campers will come. And that is one of the fastest growing trends in camping right now is alternative accommodations like glamping, yurts and TPs and so, so forth. And the, the vans, van life, like what I have, sprinters that are kind of modified and the, and so forth. You would be, you would be on the, you would be on the circuit for attracting those folks.
Oh, I think we're on the circuit. We're just trying to provide a little bit more home base for some folks because it's the dispersed camping and all the public lands around us, which is fine. And, you know, I mean, they're, they're around all over the place, which is exciting. It's an opportunity. That's what I think we're trying to align ourselves with a little bit.
Well, it's a trend that is growing and it's here to stay. And I think a lot of campgrounds need to accommodate that. Yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
Other questions?
Hey, nice to meet you. Thank you very much for your time today. Thanks for being flexible. Or maybe we were right on time for you. Our, our meeting's been all over the place. We were right on time for you, I think.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm more than flexible, you know, as you would know when you, if you, and when you hire me.
There we go.
Do you have any questions for us? Do you have any questions for us?
Why are you doing this? Well, you told me that you wanted to find this overflow, right? But you had a, you had a thing about housing. Did you really want the campgrounds to provide accommodations for houseless people?
We have a lot of different motivations. There, I, I believe there is, yeah, and, and we may not have been, done a very good job of articulating all of them in our RFP or focusing the RFP as much as we could have. But, you know, for me, the motivations are that, that the county owns some really nice pieces of land, you know, really, really special places and they, they've been park-designated for over 20 years and, you know, they sit behind barbed wire fences. You know, the, the public isn't really getting to use them. And meanwhile, we have, we do have a tremendous amount of recreational camping tourism in, in the area and a lot of it happens in a dispersed way. Around the city of, around the city of Bend, there's, there's, you know, within a half a mile, stone throw from the edge of city limits, you know, on any given night, you can probably find 50 people, you know, out there dispersed camping. And, you know, in my mind, when a, when a city gets to a certain size, you shouldn't really have dispersed camping on public lands that close. I think of it as, as something that is done farther, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of dispersed camping, but I wouldn't do it within a half a mile of, you know, medium-sized cities, city limits. So, you know, I, in the, in the big picture, I would love to see us meet some of that demand with, you know, deliberately constructed, you know, campgrounds with infrastructure so that the, the Forest Service could actually put in a prohibition on dispersed camping. you know, deliberately constructed, you know, campgrounds with infrastructure so that the Forest Service could actually put in a prohibition on dispersed camping, like, you know, a mile buffer around the city of Bend or something like that. So that's a piece of it. We definitely also have, we have people coming, we have a real housing shortage in the area. In some cases, that results in homelessness. In some cases, that results in, you know, somebody gets a job and they want to come and check the area out and they need someplace to stay for three weeks while they try to find, you know, a rental or a home for purchase. And, you know, there is, Commissioner DeMone mentioned, you know, kind of that buffer capacity. There is, there would be some real value in having some of that buffer capacity and, you know, the site in, the site in the Lapine area that, you know, it's not, you know, it's kind of in the middle of town. It's not on the edge, you know, it's not in the, out in the woods or anything. But, you know, very practical site to provide some of that kind of, you know, temporary, essentially temporary housing opportunity for people who are coming through, who are willing to stay in a market-rate campground.
Well, that goes back to the market demand and the type of amenities that you would have at your campground. You know, something like Wi-Fi, for example. People need to plug in easier. The way they drive in and out at nighttime. You know, all of that is different for people who are using this as temporary housing versus RV recreation. So my study really gets down to the nitty-gritty of that. And that's why I go to the site. That's why I go and live there and stay there. You only find, you know, you won't find many consultants to do it the way I do it. And when I'm done, the data that I provide you is indisputable. And it'll provide you with a very clear ability to market and to price the campground and to run the finances correctly. So we would have a very detailed conversation like what you're just talking about right at the beginning to be sure that I'm getting it right. And then right through the project, we would be able to meet, add updates. And so it's a very interesting project. I love Oregon. I would love to be out there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioners. So as we were discussing earlier, we have a few proposals for next steps for you to consider. First one is the board can make an award based on the evaluation committee's score and the presentations and interviews from today. Staff can return at a later date. If the board has any questions for any of the consultants, we can return at a later date. Just as a side note, I did hear from CHM, which was the second presenter.
Is there noise coming from? Thank you.
Okay. I think we got it. Acknowledging that they didn't give us a budget revisal. I didn't reach out to them. They just sent an email and so. Are we good? And so they're going to follow up with a budget revisal from CHM there. Thirdly, I guess the board could meet again and contribute to the scoring, Kim, let me know if I'm saying this right, but contribute to the scoring committee's score and see if you want to, see if you have a different evaluation. And I'm happy to quickly review the scoring committee's scores from last round if that's helpful.
That might be helpful. I mean, you know, we might be able to just say right now whether we agree or disagree with the scoring committee's scores.
So the presentations were done in order of first, or the highest score to lowest score, the top three. Echo Northwest came in at a score of 476 out of 500. CHM Government Services came in with a score of 361 out of 500. And Creighton Associates came in with a score of 342 out of 500.
Okay, so the second one was actually like a $300,000 proposal. And then the last one is only $65,000. And yet the $15,000 of that is the Forest Service BLM, which would come off of there right off the top. I really, I thought it would be important to call Samara Phillips from that Mount Hood project. He could list her number and just see what is her feedback, especially since he's done a lot of work for Clackamas County. But her number is in our group and packet.
Would you like me to place that call or would you, are you interested in placing that call?
So that was for Mr. Crane?
Right, Mr. Crane. I mean, there must be a reason why. They've used him and he's definitely more reasonable than the other two. And he's not that far from the one that was $300,000. So, I mean, you know, 20 points difference there. I mean, the one was clearly the top one and that was the local one, but they're $100,000. So what, would they be willing at all to take something off that bid? Because if we're not, if we've defined it down to three properties and there is no Forest Service BLM issues that they are going to do, unless the lower bridge property, we have to do something with the BLM because we're wanting to be right next to them. I mean, but what are the rules?
Would you like me to go back to the consultants and ask specific questions about the budgeting?
Yeah. I think it would be important because definitely if he does really a good job and he's only 20 points from the other one, I'd like to know, well, the top one, would they give any kind of a break if they're at, what, $100,000?
It would be helpful to know if we're just talking about these three sites, what is your budget now?
Yeah.
For all three. Like, I'm really excited for us to get started on this project. I don't, like, I don't want the deliberation to go on forever, but.
Well, he's not going to come until June. I think everybody really wanted just to do the project this summer when the weather's perfect.
Okay, so I'm hearing next steps to be go back to all three consultants and ask them for their bottom line budget price for evaluating, doing a camping feasibility study for the three projects listed, three properties listed.
Yes, theirs was $128,000, the first one, the 400, the people that scored the highest.
I believe they indicated in their presentation that the revisal is $100,000?
Yes, they did say $100,000. But would it be any less than that? No.
I mean, the other thing to think about is how we're paying for this. I mean, we have park-specific accounts where there's money waiting. And a few weeks ago, I mentioned that the Oregon Park and Rec Department was running their local government grant cycle. And, you know, we were just in no position to compete in that cycle and they have a lot of money. So there, you know, if we knew that, if we knew that an entity could do the project, get it done with, you know, a cushion of some months before January 2024, there's, you know, that's worth a couple of tens of thousands of dollars for us to actually be able to compete in the next grant cycle as opposed to saving 20,000 bucks and not being able to compete.
Well, Michael said he would start June 1st and I will give you the final report within six to eight weeks. So that's June, that's July 15th or August 1st when he'd have the final report done.
So going back to the original scoring, I think Echo Northwest is integrated, they're ready to go, they provide a lot of value and especially with the other projects that are happening around, you know, the whole Northwest, but, you know, the state of Oregon and central Oregon, especially with the integration with the Forest Service. So, you know, I'm just cutting to the chase here. We might want to just.
Their timeline said October. I took a picture of it.
It may be done in October.
Actually, it goes to the first of November is when the executive summary said that goes to the first of November.
I'd lean towards going with the recommendation of the scoring committee. I mean, one of the things, you know, Echo Northwest, they do, they've got the market demand, the willingness to pay, the, you know, all of that end of the equation covered. They also have, you know, they've got landscape architects, they have a sense of how to, how to put something on the ground. And then that is, that's really valuable. And the idea that half their team lives here in Deschutes County, so the dollars that we spend would basically be plodded back into the local economy. I really like that as well.
So I'd lean towards that. You understand, we're talking about Commissioner just kind of proceeding with Echo Northwest, which is the number one recommended from the scoring matrix originally. All three, I mean, it's exciting talking about this domain with every one of them. You know, oh man, let's go. But I think these guys would really be able to, you know, put pencil to paper, understand a lot of the aspects and how it integrates with everything in Deschutes County and the forested areas we live in also.
I just think it's fascinating that Clackamas used Mike O'Crane, who comes across differently, you know, and, you know, Clackamas is twice as big as us. They seem to think he was okay, so.
Oh, and I'd, yeah, he'd be good.
I've worked with Sam on some projects when I worked for ODF and I could call her up and chat with her about it. I mean, I'm not, in saying I want to go with Echo Northwest, it doesn't mean I'm, you know, I'm not valuing her opinion, but, you know, using the local guys and gals who seem to be well set up to do a good job, I don't have a problem with that either.
So just.
I would just confirm with them when they said $100,000 in the middle of this conversation that that's really the number. You know, when somebody says something off the top, I just would like it in writing.
We would go through a contract process with them and in a written agreement that would incorporate that cost.
Yeah, so I'm interested in doing that. And let's leave them as the number one selection at this time, start contracting, and then if there's any other questions, we can go from there. But, I mean, that'll put direction to it at least today instead of waiting.
I'd like to do that.
Do we need a motion, Kim?
Yep.
Do you want to just make a motion?
I move that we proceed to contract negotiations with Echo Northwest for the camping feasibility study.
And I'll second it if you don't.
You can second it.
Okay, I'm seconding it, that's fine. Any other discussion then?
No. I think I've probably said enough.
Okay, seeing then, so Commissioner Chang, Commissioner Dare.
You can vote first and then I'll make sure it's passed. Okay, all right. I'll vote yes with, I'm really worried who is going to use these parks when we get them done. So I feel like our homeless situation is pretty out of control and especially when the number is when people come in the summer. So, you know, the fact that this is 500 acres, I just, I think we're going to have to be very careful with it. So I'm saying that be careful with this project in the record.
If you've been into the Fort Thompson property, there is an abandoned, there's an abandoned RV right in the middle of it. You know, I didn't see any, I didn't see anyone, any evidence of people currently camping in there. But, you know, it's interesting, you know, there's a lot of homeless people in the city of Bend. Where do you not really see them? Inside city parks. And why not? Because they've been developed, there's a lot of traffic through them.
No, they actually, when somebody goes in a city park, the police are called and those people are asked to move immediately is what I've heard.
That's right. Because it's a developed, it's a developed public recreational location. And when we make these into developed public recreational locations, then we will be able to do the same thing.
So one other thought is the drafter road properties in the city of Lapine, you know, just for the future, so everybody hears my thought here. Maybe there's a way to take action on that earlier. You know, I mean, it's going to be kind of a, define the opportunity and execute, you know, it's going to be different than the other two properties is my point. So I don't know if there's a way to, you know, do a quick pre.
Ask them to make that the priority and get that one done first?
Or just a pre-report on it or something because, you know, I don't know that the county would run the opportunity, you know, is there a market opportunity, you know, contractor to be able to run it? Just, yeah, just an idea, just because it's so different than the other two.
I mean, it's a continuum. I mean, you know, in some ways, Fort Thompson being so close to the city of Bend is not that different. In some ways, it is different because it's got, you know, 460 other acres connected to it, you know, or 450 other acres connected to it that, you know, could form up an actual park, not just a campground. I mean.
I'm saying drafter road is on a slow dirt road with water and utilities in a city. It could be, you know, parceled out in a footprint for hosting a paying customer pretty clearly in partnership with the city, you know, so we're not, we're talking about land inside the city.
The faster we get this contract executed and we get going on this.
Did we vote? Yeah, we voted, right?
We did vote.
The faster we can get drafter road.
So yeah, this is just a post-conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, maybe we need a vote again, right?
Okay, so thank you very much for being flexible today at this time. We're going to step back to item number 15, a resolution allocating contingency within the video lottery mid-year projects and priorities. Thanks for being here at the time. We're ready for it.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Stephanie Robinson, Grants and Operations Specialist. I'm here today requesting consideration and approval of Resolution 2023-011 to increase appropriations within the 2022-2023 budget. In April 2022, the Commissioners reviewed anticipated revenue from the county's portion of video lottery proceeds for the upcoming fiscal year and developed an expenditure plan that included funding for economic development activities, various projects, and support for other organizations. These expenditures were included in the FY23 budget. Over the past couple of months, additional projects and priorities were identified and the board requested use of video lottery contingency to fund four additional projects and priorities, which totals $95,950. If approved, this resolution will allow the transfer of funds from contingency and video lottery to program expense.
Stephanie, you don't happen to have the balance then left in the contingency fund today?
Yeah, Laura Skundrick provided that to me. She said the remaining contingency, if.
After this transaction?
If this is approved, yeah, would be $934,057.
Okay, thank you.
And then about two months from now or sometime, we're going to be doing a review of that fund for the input to the annual budget.
Yep, in April.
Great, thank you so much.
So we're making this adjustment in the middle of the fiscal year. I mean, my one question would be the fundraising category. I mean, we basically went down to zero and we're adding 2,000 in to cover what we just, what we just approved, right?
Yes.
Would it make sense for us to add even more to the fundraising category because we still have one cycle left? Would it make sense to do that now or is it just as easy to do it later? Because I'm guessing we'll get some fundraising requests.
Yes, we've just received one.
Yeah.
For how much?
For the next cycle.
It'll probably be $2,500.
Commissioners, if the board would like to make an adjustment.
I don't know what it is, yeah.
It's a special day.
It is. If the board would like to potentially allow for some unexpected requests that you may receive related to fundraising or anything else, we can certainly return, we'd return with an updated problem, or, excuse me, order for your consideration.
So just do it at a later date?
Essentially, yes. So we could approve this today and come back if and when we need to do that, or we could simply postpone this to a later date and come back with an updated order that would specify a different amount to be transferred from contingency.
In terms of staff work, which one is more?
I think they're probably about the same.
They've already done this one, yes.
Let's get this.
Let's go ahead and.
That's my thought, okay. Is there a motion?
I move approval of Resolution number 2023-011, or, dash, oh, 011, allocating $95,950 of contingency within video lottery to mid-year projects and priorities in the video lottery fund.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing then, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Certified Local Government Grant Application.
Thanks for waiting all day.
Oh, no worries.
It's due to 3:30, yeah.
Thank you for accommodating me today because it really helps with the, the application process, so. Good afternoon, for the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner, Community Development. I'm here for what I think will be pretty simple. I'm here to ask permission from the board to apply for the Certified Local Government Grant on behalf of the HLC. This is a grant for historic preservation administered by the State Historic Preservation Office. We do this, we apply every cycle, which is basically more or less every two years. There's, different communities are on different cycles. The deadline for application is Friday, February 24th, which is next Friday. And we'll find out if we, well, it's a non-competitive grant, so unless I really mess something up, we will get the grant.
Don't forget to sign it.
Yes, yes, I mean, that's probably the kind of thing that I will do.
Timely fashion.
Yes, yes, we will be notified in April and all of the contracts would be executed then, and then there would be approximately 17 months to, to do that grant. Everything would be closed out by August 31st, 2024. And the memo that I provided to you provides a brief overview of the things that the HLC would like to apply for. I'll note that this year, you know, the, the maximum grants are generally, this year they, they increased it a bit, will probably run between 13 and a half and $15,000. However, our application this year is going to be for less than that. And that's just owing to the type of the things that the county HLC does. You know, and this is kind of an ongoing conversation. The county HLCs are in kind of an awkward place because it's, it's very different from a city where there's a, a lot of review, a lot of, you know, restoration to individual properties and kind of the reviewing body is the HLC. It's a little more dispersed with the county HLCs, so they really focus on connecting people, connecting groups with funding. They don't necessarily have funding themselves, but just sort of being that, that conduit and that clearinghouse of information, as well as a review body when those things do come up. They haven't come up that often. So a lot of the things that the HLC does aren't necessarily covered by the grant itself. So to that end, the things that I've listed here are things that can be covered by the grant. As you might recall, the last grant cycle, we involved the city of Sisters a lot. They did a great story map that they presented to you that showed their historic resources. That was super cool. We, as the HLC, worked on a strategic plan and a policies and procedures manual. Those were kind of big foundational documents that we're pretty proud of. So we did a lot last cycle. This cycle, we reached out to Sisters, they have one project that they'd like to pursue. They're also kind of trying to be very aware of their own capacity because their, their staffing sort of ebbs and flows. They're looking to do a building hardening program, which I think is really interesting and the people at the State Historic Preservation Office thought was interesting. Hiring a consultant to kind of look into fire-resistant building materials and sort of design guidelines, materials guidelines for, you know, if you have to fix up your historic property, how to make that a little bit more resistant to fire and things like that. So that's kind of the biggest project that we're proposing this year. That would be about $5,000. We anticipate doing a, a mailer to all the property owners in the county who have historically designated property, whether that's National Register or locally designated. We're not totally sure what that will entail yet, just, it might just be awareness saying, you know, hey, remember that you're, you're in this program. We are a resource as far as education and things like that. Unfortunately, we are not the people who can physically help them restore or fix things up, but we can kind of try to connect them with, with those people. And I think outreach, just reminding people that we're a resource will go a long way. We're also looking at a small upgrade to the Dial Web platform, which is, as you know, the way everyone can search for properties and all of the information therein. We want to have a little bit more robust information about whether it's in a historic district in a city or something like that, or right now there's just one flag in those records, but we want to kind of make that a little bit more robust, as I said, so that if you're searching for a property, you can say, oh, my gosh, this isn't a historic district, I'm so excited, or I'm not so excited, or whatever that may be, and kind of we're going to work with IT and probably the cities to get something a little bit souped up, which is pretty exciting. Those are the main tasks of the grant. There's also a lot of administrative matters, review and compliance, kind of just grant administration, bookkeeping, back of house, staff, staff tasks. So as I said, we're, actually, I didn't say it, I said it in the memo, we're anticipating a $5,500 grant request from the state, and that means that we will match that with in-kind staff time. And that is where it lies right now. So there's a, they do offer a little bit of flexibility. We're going to try to be active in Preservation Month, which is every May. This grant cycle includes two preservation months, this year and next year. It's been a little bit dormant for the last couple of years because of COVID, but we just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, last week, about kind of ramping that up. So there's a lot of opportunities and we can be a bit flexible with the state and not necessarily having to specify the exact educational opportunities, but that there are some. So it's, it gives us the ability to be nimble, depending on what shows up on our plate. So that's pretty much it. So I'm just requesting approval of this application and if, if and when we do receive it, we would come back to kind of execute all of that, bookkeeping and contracts.
Tanya?
Yes.
You said you were going to do a mailer to all property owners who have historic. How many of those are in Deshutes County and is that cost going to be covered in this grant?
Well, it would be probably about 200-ish dollars. It's not that many properties.
Oh, really?
It's less, I have it actually up here, but as we've learned, mailers, the mailers aren't as expensive as we thought, kind of a postcard with a postage, although they just raised postage, I just learned that.
Oh, they did.
Let's see, I have this.
It's going to be a dollar a, a letter pretty soon?
I think it's, it's about 40 properties, so it's really, we're not looking, that's including National Register. Give or take, I'm just looking really quickly, but, so it's not, it's not a ton and maybe if that's, depending on how that money shakes out, we could do it every year or something like that, or supplementary things, depending on what's going on.
Okay. Well, I move we authorize staff to apply for the 2023-24 Certified Local Government Grant in the amount of $5,500.
Any other discussion? Seeing then, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Go get them!
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
One, one thing I would ask, and maybe I should ask this, I thought we had approved a policy where grants under a certain size are your discretion to, to approve? I mean, I, I'm.
I thought that was once we get it.
Oh, okay.
Right? Isn't it once, is it?
Grant submissions.
Do execute the contract, that limitation?
I think it's, I think it's grants, Eric's coming up, I think it's grants under 10,000 that do not add FTE.
We don't need to ask permission at all, or I?
Correctly.
I mean, you know, I, I, I very much enjoy hearing about projects. It was cool to hear about, about what we're doing with the Historic Landmark, Landmark Commission. But, you know, I'd like, could this have been a consent agenda item instead of, you know, making Tanya wait for us to, all this time?
I thought that was just to accept the grant.
Yeah, I think it's under, under 10,000, the department head can, can approve it and then the county administrator has authority. It's, I think it's 50,000 and below. Does that sound right?
To apply.
Apply and accept.
I think it was under 10,000 if we're, if we're not adding any FTE.
Yeah, that's the key.
This likely could have been approved at, at the department head.
And then the board may still see those smaller grants if a budget adjustment, if a budget adjustment is required. For larger departments, it may not be required because they have the spending authority they need.
Again, I'm excited to hear about the project, but.
This could have been an email. No, I appreciate it.
Remember, it was the Audit Committee, we had a, we were dinged on our annual financial reporting because we didn't have an accounting of what grants we had applied for, what, did we complete all the requirements of all grants that we applied for? Not that we were out of compliance, but we just didn't know. So I'm just saying, I've been in that spot where you're like, oh, well, we should probably make sure we have an eye on this. And I think we do have, you know, at least a spreadsheet on that finance now.
And I will just note, not necessarily, mine depends, but normally these, these requests are actually more than $10,000. This year is the first time that it's been a little bit less, so. But yes, understood and we'll, we'll note that for.
You couldn't apply for 15?
Come on in anytime, though.
We couldn't, I mean, this is, it's a fair question. It seemed like there wasn't enough tangible, there weren't enough tangible projects, you know, the Commissioners are wonderful, they have a ton of ideas, a ton of experience, but it didn't necessarily manifest itself in a project that was, okay, this is going to cost $8,000 and we're going to write a check. So it was, it, it didn't really lead itself logically to applying for that because it does.
It is a one-to-one match, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we, we don't want to kind of create work and make things up just for the sake of getting to the grant. So we, we are in a little bit of a tricky position this year, I will, I will say, but.
Is there a window of time, as in as time goes on, there's more properties that are older than, you know, 50 or 75 years old? So all of a sudden, is there a upswing in this thing?
Well, the thing about the nominations is it's, it's private property, so it's not up to us per se to say, you know, we're going to nominate your property because some people don't, might not want it, some people do want it. So that, and this is something we struggle with, whether it's for restoration, if something's clearly, you know, being neglected or something, there's only so much that the county can do. We can help facilitate the process, connect people, but we can't be the.
Nobody's really.
Police, unfortunately, and we can't nominate something without property owner consent. So that's, that's the, the rub, I think.
Kind of like a area of special interest.
But it is, it's a rolling, really, of 50 years. And I recall Peter and I met with the State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, a couple of years ago, and they said, you know, come about 2025, we're going to begin to see those 1975 ranch houses with the avocado appliances become eligible for historic designation, so.
Sunken living rooms?
That was a, a nice moment we had with, with SHPO. So yes, more properties will become eligible, but as Tanya mentioned, there has to be property owner consent.
And that, I mean, that's actually why we are going to be doing these mailers, you know, maybe there are people who are aware and they're saying, hey, I do want to apply for this, but we can't, you can lead a horse to water, as it were, but we can't, there's only so much that the county can do as the government.
But to make him drink is something else.
He has to be over 50.
No, I do have a rock guard at my house that is like ancient from the original cattle ranch, but it's just one little rock guard.
There you go.
Yes, and I'm sure it's over 50 years old. I know I'm not applying it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Eric.
So at this time, other items, and we do have executive session today.
Yes. When the Commissioners are done, we, we have an item to check in with you on, about tomorrow morning, okay?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we did, wow. No, let's get to that, that's important because of timely. We were going to try to do it first thing this morning. So this is a presentation for the three of us tomorrow morning at the Shark and Sun River, Lapine Chamber and Sun River Chamber. We're going to be presenting, in fact.
I have updated slides.
Great, thank you.
Changed some numbers on the second slide.
So I like the slides as they are, I don't know the, there's just, I'll be looking for an opportunity just to say some things. So some of my thoughts are, you know, the trades are out there for, for high school kids to understand, so this is kind of speaking to small business people. The graduate rates in, in Lapine were atrocious this year relative to the Ben Lapine school system. And then we can also enjoy just reminding people that if you want to be a call taker at 911, man, we've got an opportunity for you right now. And we have other positions at Deshutes County. So those are just some of those other thoughts around, you know, jobs and careers that I would like to bring up tomorrow.
Well, I would actually like to talk about the workforce and business development because when I saw this, I knew we were missing the 2.2 million because people were crying when they got those checks. That was at Christmas time, December of 2020.
Oh, please do that. So you want to speak to that bullet point you're saying?
Yes.
I mean, if the, if the broad question that was put to us was how does Deshutes County support local businesses, I think, I think everything that's in here is appropriate.
Oh, and I, yep. I was just sharing other thoughts I had. So there's, any, any proposals, proposal changes for Stephanie then?
That was the one I already gave it to her this morning.
Yeah, so I think we're all set, though. I mean, so this structure will work, we'll say our piece, we'll be part of, but four different bullet items during the day, I think we determine, so we're going to be on for anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes maybe, and we'll just work back and forth. I can say hi and introduce, hand it off to Commissioner Dare for Workforce and Business Development. Would you want to touch base with childcare, you know, take the second bullet on that page or just another?
You know, each take a slide. I can, I'd be happy to take the next one.
Okay, so Commissioner Dare, you can.
I'll do the childcare then, I'll do the page.
The whole, yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
Great.
I'll get the third page.
Okay.
Land donations and DSL land transfer.
Yeah, and then I'll talk about our economic development stuff.
Oh, that's wonderful. That was easy.
And then Commissioner Chang, if you want to talk CPAC, I'll talk East Cascade Works.
Can you do that? That'll work.
Okay. And then Commissioner Dare, I'll give you the microphone.
And I can say thank you for.
And you can answer all the other questions.
Wonderful.
So thanks for preparing these and we'll, we'll make it work tomorrow morning.
You're welcome. I'll send these to Christine then, Sun River Chamber, she'll have them queued up for you and then I'll print copies to and put them in your mailbox.
I think we're all set, yeah, no need to do anything else.
If we're not changing it.
Yep.
Just take this one.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So also, we're going to, the SLED Annual Luncheon, remember the $1,000 of that allocation just now is for that. I was at a SLED meeting yesterday, so the, the monthly meeting of the SLED groups on River and Lapine business people. And we're setting up for this luncheon, so they asked for a few words, so I'll be stepping up to say, you know, thanks for coming to the luncheon and, you know, just, as kind of a county advocate for SLED. I mean, if you, if we're all going to be in attendance, I'll, I can acknowledge everybody and, you know, if somebody really wants to say something or whatever. I think it's April, so, I don't know.
Is that on our?
We've got two tables we were buying, so we'll be able to bring other staff to this also. So I'll be stepping up to, as I say, to say some words and I'll acknowledge whoever else is in the room. Unless there's any other thoughts or more structure that needs to be, and we're not, it's more an introduction, just an introduction. Lori Chesley's the speaker, COCC president, or director.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was just another item I had. Anything else, Commissioner Dare?
I did testify yesterday on the Juniper bill and it was extremely well presented by the group, so. And Doug was there right in the middle of it.
That was just a public hearing on the matter?
Mm-hmm, yes. Exactly.
Commissioner Chang, tell us about DC. Are the cherry blossoms out yet?
Not yet.
It's always right before that when NICO happens.
I think so, yeah. Otherwise, the hotels would probably cost a lot more.
Yeah, there you go.
We, I already mentioned the, the Vanville and Ask, and it really will take, it will take a very bipartisan push to get, to get that, to move quickly through Congress. And then I'm under the impression that actually, if we can line up, you know, if we can line up members from both sides of the aisle, across both houses of, of Congress, that the. Things, at least, the, you know, what, what happens in DC and what happens in Congress, that, that part could move fairly quickly. There's still lots of processes, you know, at the BLM, you know, appraisals and all that kind of stuff that will take as long as it takes, but we could, you know, it's within our power to make the DC part move very quickly. So.
Oh, so this legislative session, which means this two-year period.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, one of the, one of the staffers at, at Wine's office said, you know, said, you know, we could, you know, we could, we could draft up, you know, and, and move, you know, a small conveyance through the Energy and Natural Resource Committee, where, where, you know, Wyden is kind of the second most senior person on the, on the, on the Dem side. You know, he said they, they could, they can move that through like that if they knew that there was no resistance. And, and, you know, the, the, the key concern, again, is just, you know, everything is viewed through a partisan lens these days. So if, if we line up bipartisan support, then there shouldn't be any resistance. So that was one of the things that I, I worked on.
We have to come up with a cool acronym for the, for a bill name, though. I'm joking around.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't totally understand whether there was actually a bill, or whether we just come in under that Recreation and Public Purpose Act and, and, you know, execute a transaction somehow. You know, more details on that as we, as we work, work the process with them. The other thing that I, the other things that I, that I worked on, or, you know, kind of pushed with, with the two senators were, I requested that they consider doing a congressionally-directed spending request for some kind of residential behavioral health treatment facility. And I've been working with Janice and Holly on ideas for that. But we, it, it's quite possible we don't have something ripe to put forward for this cycle of congressionally-directed spending requests, in which case I'll, I'll go to my fallback, which is trying to support other, other CDS requests that are coming from other entities. You know, the City of Bend will have an affordable housing request that comes forward. I know Mosaic Medical was inspired by the effort that, you know, the successful effort from Lapine Community Health Center last year. So they, they'd like to try to run that, run that same path for some of the facilities that they want to build in Bend. They, you know, there'll be, there'll be plenty of other congressionally-directed spending requests to, to throw support behind. I was just hoping we could put something forward that was, you know, county-specific, that was, you know, often kind of not necessarily just our project, but a project that we are a significant partner in. So that was a congressionally-directed spending request. And then the, the third issue that I really, that I, I worked over with them and got, got, I think, some good support on was flexibility, flexibility with prescribed fire smoke, because we really, we have this, this incredible challenge that prescribed fire in the West Bend project area surrounding the City of Bend is, is incredibly important for, to protect the city from burning to the ground, for wildfire, for firefighter safety. But it's, it's, with the way that the topography and the winds are, it's virtually impossible to do a prescribed fire in that area without having a, a national ambient air quality standard, smoke particulate manner 2.5 exceedance. And so we talked about how the county has this newfound capacity. You know, we have an environmental health position, and, you know, environmental hazards position, Sarah Worthington, who is, is in a great place to coordinate notification systems, you know, for, for vulnerable populations in the city, to help deploy HEPA filters at the residential level, and, you know, industrial air scrubbers to schools, or to, you know, homeless shelters, or, or other, other places where we need to offer essentially a clean air shelter for people during a prescribed fire event, so that if we do have to put significant smoke into the air to get prescribed fire done for a day or two, we can, we can, to a great extent, mitigate the, any kind of public health impacts that that would have by just making sure that anyone who, who's a vulnerable population knows it's coming and has access to, to ways to, you know, clean up their indoor air, to, to shelter in place as needed. So that, they, they were very interested in that as well, made a bunch of recommendations on how we could work that through with the EPA. And I'll be, I'll be pursuing that with public health staff, with the Forest Collaborative, and with the Forest Service, and ODF and DQ. That guy Greg Sveland, who was here, who, you know, I, I, I took to task about this issue a year or more ago. He, he's been trying to coordinate through regional solutions meetings with the Forest Service, ODF and DQ about how we could get this done, how we can be set up to do a decent amount of prescribed fire in the West Bend area in a couple of months, April or May. Those are, that's my, the big reports back from, from DC, that the conference itself was, was valuable, a lot of good information. And on Tuesday, Joe Biden was supposed to come and talk at 1:00 PM, and we were all there waiting at 1:00 PM, and he finally arrived at 1:45, and I had to leave 10 minutes later to catch my flight. So.
I was able to see him the year before, I guess. So, great. Well, thanks for going and representing Deschutes County.
Well, you both were there the year before.
Yeah.
And the very sad thing was my son spent 12 hours in DC on Saturday, flying on his way to Cape Town. And if I would have been there, I could have, like, he could have spent the day sleeping in my room. So anyway, I know, he sent me pictures from there. It was a spectacular day. And I was like, how did we miss that you were going to Cape Town, South Africa? So anyhow, I did meet with Megan Perkins the other day, and I did talk about requesting funding, because we have got to clean up China Hat. And of course, they're going to say they can't, there's no money to clean it up with. And the destruction from two weeks ago when I was there, it's, it's overwhelming. So I think if we could ask, Megan said, you know, the city and the county should go together and ask for China Hat cleanup funds, and just see if we could get something. I'm sure it's going to be enormous with all the vehicles that have been abandoned, the burnouts that have happened. And I know when we've ever spent any county funds, that it doesn't go very far, according to Christie, and then they come back in. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a very dangerous place. The fact that we could have lost someone who had served as our police chief for several years a couple of weeks ago is really, we've got to clean it up.
Are you suggesting that's an ask to the feds?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's going to be federal cleanup, but they're not going to have any money. If we can, if there's any way we can move people to a safer spot. And so what if we have the money sitting here so that we can actually make sure that it does get cleaned up? And I'm sure our public would approve.
Director's some money.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what kind of scale of dollars we're talking about there, but I would rather ask them for those BLM lands, for a new landfill site, or for a few million dollars for a behavioral health facility.
Well, we can always ask for both.
Well, it may be, just having it pop up may be a message, you know, I mean-
Right.
Well-
You know, we've got a lot of federal lands right around us.
I mean, if we're talking, you know, if we're talking about a cleanup event, that's not a scale that, that you make a congressionally-directed spending request, you know, dollar ask for. I mean, that's, you know, 20,000 bucks. I mean, like the-
20,000 bucks, that doesn't-
Public Land Stewards, those guys are out there at China Hat doing cleanups a few times a year. You know, a few, a few thousand dollars per vehicle gets, you know, X number of abandoned vehicles out of there. So that's, you know, the, you make congressionally-directed spending requests for things that cost millions of dollars. So I, that's-
Oh, this could be millions of dollars if you saw all my pictures.
Well-
It's clearly millions of dollars.
I mean, if you have a, if you have a proposal for a comprehensive solution that involves the federal government, I, I think that is the kind of thing that you make a congressionally-directed spending request for. If you say, hey, we want you to, you know, fund a cleanup at this X date, you know, I think that's something that you, you can ask your members of Congress to put their thumb on the federal agency to get done. But that's not a congressionally-directed spending request, in my opinion.
We'll just leave it at that for now. It may come around again, though.
Well, it's, due date is, isn't it March 3rd or something? It's shortly.
It's coming up shortly, and staff was planning to come back to the board next week to continue the discussion related to this and any potential projects that the board may want to submit, so that staff can help scope them. So we'll be back next week.
Well, I'll have conversations with Congressman Westerman, who is head of Natural Resources, and then also, you know, our congresspeople, you know, Congressman Benz and Congressman, you know, Lori Chaffee's dreamers. So we'll see what they say. But they know it's a huge problem, that, and people are done with it. Especially if we would have lost that, if we would have lost that woman who lives right down there, we would all be sitting here really wondering why this federal land has been allowed to be destroyed at the level. I mean, I have a picture with, where seven trees in one photograph were cut down to the ground. Seven fairly large trees. It's, it's really sad. And the destruction on all those trees, I, you know, unbelievable.
So, yeah, next week, we'll bring that together.
I would say that, so particularly Senator Wyden was really interested in understanding how various funding opportunities through the bipartisan infrastructure law and through the Inflation Reduction Act would actually get to the ground. And he said, you know, like, I want to know which of those programs you need money from, and, you know, whether you're running into red tape getting it. So, and he, he offered his staff up to, essentially, they're going to do some kind of a big workshop to try to present to counties what, what the opportunities are that they, that they know of. And I think what would be more valuable would be for them to, you know, do a listening session where people could say, like, hey, we need, I need money for, you know, this bridge replacement. Do you know what category, or, or, you know, what program I should be, I should be applying for funds for? Because it's, you know, the, the list of, you know, these new programs is, is kind of overwhelming. But so that's, that's something that is not a congressionally-directed spending request that I think we should be tracking and, you know, trying to get the most out of. One piece that, Jen's not here right now, but one piece that I learned about was an energy efficiency and conservation program that is apparently, there's $78,000 of formula funding available for Deschutes County. We just need to, you know, tell them what we want to use the money for, to, to access. So there's, there's things like that, where there's, there's some really good opportunities coming out of those two pieces of legislation, and we just need to understand better what all the opportunities are so that we can take the best advantage of them. And I, I had asked, you know, there was actually a, an article in the bulletin this morning about the bipartisan infrastructure law and road safety projects. And so I asked Cody Smith and Chris Doty about, about that. And they said that they actually had already submitted an application for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, which was not awarded. So that'll be, that'll be good feedback to give to our, our senators as well. Like, hey, you, you said you want to know how we are using these programs. Well, we actually applied for this one, and we didn't, we weren't successful. So they might want to know about that.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other items?
Okay, so at this time, we'll go to an executive session. Thanks for staying by today. So executive-